This is true. That's one way to look at it.
Good evening. We apologize for the delay. I'll call this meeting to order.
You stand for the Pudge Allegiance?
Our assistant clerk is joining us this evening, so welcome.
Thank you.
Could you do the roll call, please?
Dr. Bellamy?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
Announcements?
I have an announcement. Good evening, everyone. This announcement comes from Mr. Alexander. The B&amp;J African American Book Fest will take place on Saturday, October 12, 2019, at the Gordon Avenue Library, which is located at 1500 Gordon Avenue from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Mr. Alexander and our Legacy Incorporated presents the B&amp;J African American Book Fest focusing on local African American stories in partnership with the Jefferson Madison Regional Library. Again, the event is on Saturday, October 12, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Gordon Avenue Library. The presenters are Anne Wicks Carter, who's a local historian, Ms. Paige Hill, who's a storyteller, and Mr. Alexander, an author from the area. There will be a tribute to Brenda Burrows, Gresham Groit, Lady of Fables, June Mitchell Bridgeforth of Ujama Bookstore, and the former owner and the Roland Buford Book Collection. This is a free event, and the community is invited. For more information, please contact Mr. Alexander at (434) 202-0773 or at alexzen@ic.net. Second announcement, really quickly. There is a run. The UVA runs coming up this weekend. What's the name of it?
Bridge.
There you go, Community Bridges. I knew one of y'all had my back. If I didn't announce it, I was gonna get in trouble. The Community Bridges Run is this Saturday. The proceeds are going to support different local initiatives who are support -- local organizations supporting affordable housing. I'll be running with the FAR group. I know Habitat has a group as well, correct? As well as a couple of other organizations. Forgive me for not mentioning you. It's still not too late to sign up. You can go on racesignup.com, and you'll see the race there. Again, it's the Community Bridges Run. It is this Saturday, 8:00 a.m. It's a four-miler, and I heard whoever wins, Dan Rosenzweig was gonna take you to lunch, so... That's what he says.
And we have another announcement, DMV Connect?
Yes, I have that one.
Okay.
DMV Connect wants to thank everyone for giving the opportunity to serve customers. On Tuesday, September 30, which has passed, in the city space, they processed 84 transactions. They had 53 driver identification cards, and of those 40 were real IDs, so they were really impressed with that showing, and they want to look forward to the next visit. They're letting folks know is Monday, November 25, from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Again, DMV Connect, the next time they will be visiting, is Monday, November 25, from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
Are there any other announcements? Proclamation?
Appears that I have one proclamation here. For domestic violence awareness. Whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, racial, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifference, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, do a systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, with the impact of this crime being wide-ranging. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate domestic violence on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent such violence, support victims and survivors and their families, and increase support for agencies providing services to those community members. And whereas the Shelter for Help and Emergency has led the way in the city of Charlottesville in addressing domestic violence by providing 24-hour hotline services to victims, survivors, and their families, offering support and information, and empowering survivors to chart their own course for healing, and whereas the Shelter for Help and Emergency commemorates its 39th year of providing unparalleled services to women, children, and men who have been victimized by domestic violence, now therefore be it resolved in recognition of the important work being done by the Shelter for Help and Emergency, our Mayor Nakia Walker, with the support of City Council, hereby proclaims the month of October 2018 -- that should be 19, I'm reading -- as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the Shelter for Help and Emergency, and to work toward the elimination of personal and institutional violence against women, children, and men. Signed and sealed the 7th day of October 2019 by Nakia Walker.
Is anyone here to accept the proclamation? Okay, and we'll get that updated?
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on a matter on the consent agenda? Ms. Robinson, can you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda. Item A, minutes. August 19, regular meetings. September 3, special and regular meetings. B, appropriation. Funding for Virginia Temporary Assistance to Needied Families Employment and Training Pilot Program. $50,000. Second reading. C, appropriation. Charlottesville-Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant Award. $300,548. Second reading. D, appropriation. Refund of tax payment to East Market Street LLC. $16,173.30. Second reading. E, appropriation. Virginia Department of Historic Resources. 2019-2020 Certified Local Government Grant Funding for 10th and Page Neighborhood Historic Resources Survey. $31,590. Second reading. F, appropriation. Albemarle County Funding for Albemarle County Resident Workforce Development Training. $13,395. Second reading. G, appropriation. Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS/HIV. $240,642. Second reading. H, appropriation. Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grant Award. $484,785. Second reading. I, resolution. Hedgerow Land Acquisition. $37,500. First of first reading. J, ordinance. PEG Bandwidth Virginia LLC Telecommunications Franchise. First of two readings. K, ordinance. Rental Relief for Elderly and Disabled. Second reading. L, ordinance. Changes to Real Estate Tax Relief Program for Elderly and/or Disabled. Second reading.
Is there anyone now who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as written.
Second. Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Ms. Robinson, someone said that you have a really nice radio voice. Is that -- is that -- are you like on the radio or something sometime?
That carries five. All right, now we have our city manager's response to community matters from the previous meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, the public. Just wanted -- I don't have anything to report from our last meeting, but I do want to talk to the community about the trolley route, the pilot study. We did begin the process of changing the street signs going down Second Street where the trolley will be turning. We also are making the stop so that the bus will stop at Midway Manor and then continue on South Street and turn down Second Street and go through the mall and then make a right onto Market Street. So, we are in that process. We started with the trolleys on Sunday, and this will continue for a period of 90 days, and we do have the professional here who sits in that position now, Mr. Garland William, who is the head of our CAT system, who has necessary expertise to be able to talk about the performance of that route with this change. If anything should change in terms of us not being able to find the necessary data that we've been looking for, as well as with the community that it will be serving, we will be able to expand that beyond those 90 days, but I think with his level of expertise in those particular areas, we'll be able to find that information. So, once again, that has been reported through various media outlets. It is on the CAT's website, as well as on the city's website. We've also done social media through Facebook and Twitter to be able to put that information out there about this route change. So, it is in effect, and we're moving forward. I guess for some folks, you say finally.
So, you're saying that if, at the 90-day point, you need more data, you will continue it, but you think that you will have enough information at that point to make a decision?
Yes, if we need more information, we will be able to do that, but I think that we'll be able to gather all the information we need within that 90-day period.
And I think--
And I wasn't too sure about that in the beginning because we didn't have, you know, that level of expertise or the experience coming from, you know, a larger system to be able to provide that information.
And is that something that you would like to just discuss the difference between the vote for council at six months and the 90 days?
Yes. Also, too, I know the council did decide to do, in their previous meetings, six months, but that information was given to the public by the traffic engineer, but not the person from the CAT system. What we do have, like I said before, someone who has operated a larger system, who can, you know, basically tell the performance of different routes in different areas, and their overall performance, and if it needs to be enhanced or not. So, having a person in that position instead of an interim person, I think that will be in good shape with Mr. Williams.
Are there any other questions?
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Robinson.
You're welcome.
All right. Is that your own?
Yeah, and also I want to say, too, that Mr. Williams, he will be going to Midway Manor to be able to have a conversation with the individuals who live within that building to talk about transportation, and then the different things that they see or need within those particular routes, as he continues to analyze and be able to review the overall CAT system, because we're looking at all process improvements at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the community matters. Got there rather quickly. We have Honi Peacock?
It's Honey Ann.
Honey, okay. Honey Ann?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I go there?
Here, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Honey Ann Peacock, and I am ceding my time to Brooke Ray.
Hey. As many times as I've done this, this doesn't get easier. I'm Brooke Ray. I'm the manager of Food and Agriculture Programs for the International Rescue Committee here in Charlottesville. I also represent the IRC with the Charlottesville Food Justice Network and have been an active -- taken an active role in the Food Equity Initiative. I believe you guys received the report, is that right? From us this week or today. Having grown up here in Charlottesville, I have seen my peers, friends, neighbors struggle with getting by, as Charlottesville has become more expensive and popular place to live. Affordable housing is, of course, one key issue and a core issue, which I also care deeply about, but to my mind, this is the bare minimum of what we should be able to accommodate to the backbone members of our community who keep our city running. Affordable living, which includes healthy, affordable food as a human right, which is the issue that I care so deeply about, is included in this concept. As a self-proclaimed world-class city, we can do better to meet the needs of our community. But we on the Food Justice Network know that this is not something that City Council can do alone, and that's why we've invested the last year in our work. I want to commend City Council for their support of the city's Food Equity Initiative over the last year, and urge you all to dig into your reports and continue to invest in food justice. As a participating member, I co-led the Urban Agriculture Chapter of the Food Equity Initiative. I've had the opportunity to work closely with the city's Parks and Rec Department, especially Chris Genzek, and learning about some of the best practices from them in developing land access plan for urban agriculture. Chris and the Parks and Rec Office work closely with our team to provide advice and feedback to our recommendations to you, so I want to thank them as well. I've also had the pleasure of helping to fulfill your charge to engage our community at large, to build leadership to drive this change. We have gathered so much input, and also supporting community food justice advocates present here today. Anybody here want to give a shout-out? To lead our recommendations directly from our residents. We've led community surveys. The IRC sponsored a photo boy exhibit to hear from our refugee community about what matters most to them. We held a large Charlottesville community-based workshop where people from around the country, but particularly community members and city members and city staff were present to design food system change. We've gathered 330 community signatures supporting food access and food justice in Charlottesville. We've begun to cultivate momentum and partnerships, and we need to continue our work together. There are so many in the-- There are so many in the crowd that will speak to affordable housing. Please also note that we support these efforts as we cultivate an affordable city to live in. People have a right to affordable housing and food in their community. We're seeing the increase of both food and housing costs go up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Chen. I live in Charlottesville, and I'm ceding my name, my time to Jeanette Kowachi.
My name is Jeanette Kowachi. I am a resident of Charlottesville. In full transparency, I also work for Habitat for Humanity of Greater Charlottesville. I am also the board chair for the Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless, and I'm a member of the Charlottesville Albemarle Affordable Housing Coalition. I'm here to express some thoughts and some requests that I have of councilors regarding the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund or the CAF item on tonight's agenda. I want to start by saying thank you, thank you, thank you for, I'm utterly grateful for the, for city staff and council members' commitment, incredible commitment to affordable housing, thirty-plus million dollars over the next five years. It's truly incredible. I know it took a lot of work, a lot of listening, a lot of accounting, gymnastics, and a lot of strong personal convictions on your part to get here, so I really want to emphasize and thank you for that. Last year during the CIP budgeting process, you all worked really hard together to ensure that the CAF would be funding despite the fact, funded despite the fact that in the city's original, city staff's original budget, there was no money allocated specifically for the fund. Under your direction, the staff worked to allocate approximately eight hundred thousand dollars initially to the fund. And then during the March twenty-seventh work session, as well as the following city council meeting, you all expressed a will to commit an additional seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of the city's anticipated year-end surplus towards the CAF, making it whole at one point five five million. As December is fast approaching and there's been whisperings of a lot of competing priorities for that surplus, I would like to kindly remind councilors of that previous commitment that you have made and to really urge you to follow through on that commitment. With respect to the current round of applications for the CAF, I really want to express strong support for the HACX recommendations. Personally, as board chair for the Thomas, for T-Jack, I couldn't be more thrilled for the HACX recommendation to support the crossings for Virginia's support housing.
Crossings too.
Sorry, sorry, the crossings too, that's right. We have an opportunity to end chronic homelessness in this community. It's incredibly exciting, and I ask for your support for that recommendation. I also support funding AHEP for critical home repair services. It's absolutely essential for preserving affordable homeownership opportunities for low-income families in these communities. But as you listen to and as you consider a CAF recommendations, as you consider the surplus, as you consider next year's budget, I want to ask councilors to please commit to a funding strategy that really guarantees a robust continuum of housing. If, you know, as a community, we're truly created, committed to creating a more equitable and inclusive Charlottesville, when we're currently facing the highest levels of income inequality and a wealth gap in this community, I don't know how we're going to get there without supporting affordable homeownership opportunities, and that is a gap that I see in the city's sort of package of affordable housing at this moment.
Thank you.
So I just want to thank you for your time and then ask those in this room that are here to support affordable homeownership in Charlottesville to please stand.
My name is Michaela Woodley, and I would like to cede my time to Ms. Kizzy Walker.
Good afternoon, councilors.
Good afternoon, or good evening.
My name is Kizzy Walker, and I'm a city resident of Charlottesville, and I have been all my life, and I just wanted to read something to you. I live at one fifteen Mount Pillia, right here in Charlottesville, and I'm here today to thank you for the support for affordable housing and to ask you to continue to support more affordable homeownership opportunities in Charlottesville. I was born and raised in Charlottesville, and I spent early part of my childhood growing up on Hardy Drive. I spent most of my childhood living in Garrett Square. Life was hard, but it was also good. I grew up with family around me in Charlottesville. Everybody, my sisters, my brothers, my parents, my uncles, we all lived in, here in Charlottesville. Always had someone, someone here to support me if I needed it. But now everybody is gone. It's just me and my dad and my brother. That's it. Everybody left. Even I left for a little while. I moved to Waynesboro back in two thousand and seven. Even though I had a pretty good job here, working at the Hilton Garden Inn, I still couldn't afford to live here as a single mom, so I moved to Waynesboro. But I tried to keep my job here. I was driving back and forth for a while, but that drive, especially with the higher part of After Mountain, it took a toll on my car and eventually broke down, so I couldn't keep my job here anymore. When I left and when the rest of my family left Charlottesville, it wasn't because we wanted to leave. We left because no matter how hard we worked, no matter how many jobs we had, our wages couldn't keep up with our rent. And I have seen this happen to many, to too many black families in Charlottesville. We're being pushed out of our own communities where we have lived for generations to make room for students and other people with more money. I work full-time at a hotel cleaning fifteen to eighteen rooms a day for eleven twenty-five an hour. My ankles are swollen and aching because I have pins and screws in my foot from a surgery I had earlier this year. I am on my feet all day long, and I deal with things that you don't even want to think about. Feces, blood, throw-up, and other bodily fluids that you just don't want to know. There are other, there are so many people like me working for nine to ten dollars an hour doing backbreaking work that makes the city what it is. We keep this city running. We keep football fans happy and coming back. We feed you. We clean up after your messes. We drive you to where you need to go. We watch your children. We take care of the elderly and disabled. It's people like me that make Charlottesville one of the America's best cities to live in. But I feel like we are treated like we don't deserve to have a place to call home here, and that's just, does not feel right. Now, I know and really appreciate the city is investing a lot of money to fix public housing and to build more affordable apartments. That is really important, and it's going to help a lot of low-income families, so thank you. My question to you is then what? Is renting, or even worse, public housing, the end of the road for families like mine in Charlottesville? Places like public housing and Friendship Court were never meant to be permanent, but there are places that have been there for years, for decades. There are people that have been living there for years and decades. They can't leave because they can't afford anything else. My mom lived in public housing. I was raised in public housing. Now my oldest daughter is raising her children in public housing. That is four generations in public housing. It has got to stop. It is going to stop here with me because I'm working hard to finance, to finally become a homeowner in Charlottesville with Habitat for Humanity through their Pathways to Housing Program. When I applied for the program last year, I was living with my two children in a single room in a house shared with other people. It wasn't a place meant for children or even humans for that matter, but it was all that I could afford at the time. When I applied, my income was too low and my debts were too high to meet Habitat's program requirements. But instead of just saying no to me, they told me yes. We're going to help you get financially stable first so that you are ready to become a homeowner. And since being in a program, they are helping me find a better-paying job, helping me pay off debts, and they helped me get into a safe and affordable housing situation so I can work on my finances and get back on my feet. Charlottesville is my home. This is where I grew up. This is where I built my relationships. This is my home. I want to stay. I want my kids to be able to stay and their kids to be able to stay if they want to. And the best way to guarantee that is if I become a homeowner, if we have a safe and stable and affordable place to call our own. Thank you for your support for affordable housing.
Hello, my name is Zoe Pham. I live in Charlottesville, and I want to give my time to Phyllis Meredith.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Meredith. I live on Elliott Avenue. I'm a, I'm proud to say that I'm the first Habitat homeowner in Charlottesville.
Could you make sure you're talking into the mic so you can...
You say you're the first Habitat homeowner in Charlottesville?
I'm the first Habitat homeowner. I've been in my home for twenty-seven years. Being a homeowner has been a blessing. I look around today at rental prices, and I know I wouldn't be able to afford it unless I got a roommate or something. I have two sons. My younger son was in the hospital when I found out about Habitat. Starting to build homes in Charlottesville, I had a friend in Lynchburg who had purchased a Habitat home, and I was looking through the phone book to see if Habitat was building in Charlottesville. The place we were living in had wires hanging out of the ceiling, and it wasn't safe, and I was actually paying two electrical bills. I was paying upstairs and downstairs unbeknownst to me. I was sitting in the living room when I got the call that I had been chosen to be the first Habitat homeowner, and I just sat there and all I could do was cry. October's a special month for me, and that's when Habitat started building my own, so this is an anniversary for me. To be a single parent, it wasn't easy, but I'm proud to say that I was in my twenties when I first became a homeowner. Having a home, having a home meant my kids had a safe yard to play in and their own rooms to do their homework and to play. I was able to teach them the values of hard work, and they had state, they had the stability of being in one home for most of their lives and learn to respect what they owned, what I owned. Now my kids are grown. I have four grandbabies. Both of my boys are doing well, and their careers are blooming. My oldest son is a certified mechanic, and he put himself through college. My youngest son is a fitness trainer, which Wes, you've ran with him, David Johnson. We couldn't have done it without Habitat. In two thousand and seven, we had a mortgage payment party at my house after I paid off my house in full, never missing a payment, and I felt a huge sense of relief and accomplishment. I felt like I did something for me and my family. With Habitat, you can move ahead, and you look forward to being a homeowner, and it gives you a goal to work towards, something you can pass down to your children. I've met a lot of wonderful people through Habitat. I've developed a lot of long friendships. Habitat basically became part of my family. I'm now proud to serve the, be serving on the Habitat Homeowners Council Committee along with, along with nine other Habitat owners. We know firsthand the power of affordable homeownership. Together, we're meeting once a month and advi- advertising Habitat on how to be better support families in our community. Habitat cares about what we have, have to offer and what we share. One of my boys was following in my footsteps. He was trying to, but he couldn't afford to live here, so he lives in the county, and he's still trying to find a home. It's too expensive to live here, so. It breaks my heart that he's planning to move away because it's so much cheaper to live somewhere else, and it's just sad. I hope that you will give more thought to the importance of homeownership. It allows people, people to have dreams and visions, and their children's dreams and visions come true. It helps their children to have fresh, fresh starts and chance, a chance to thrive. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Mary Carey, city resident. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, city council. Thank y'all for doing what you did with the trolley. Yesterday, the people were so excited because they saw the trolleys coming down every half an hour. And today, it was so many people getting on and off that trolley till, you can go ahead on and do it for six months. Trolley already there. We saw six people get off that trolley, and two of them had bicycles, Ms. Gavin. And they just rode on down, you know, continued our journey down the street. But then we saw Mr. Long not here. Mr. Long used to take Ms. Long about twenty minutes to get across the street, but Mr. Long sat there and waited on the trolley. And he rode that trolley today. He felt so good, he said, riding it. But thank you very much because the people at Midway Manor right now, we have been trying to get this thing together since last year, but we only presented to y'all the beginning of the year. I'm sad to say that it took like one, two, three different times to say that the pilot was going to go through. But now that it's finally going through, let's hope that the way, you got signs everywhere, Mr. Richardson. I don't know why people can't see them. Because you got one sign that's so big, they say, "Do not enter." Take a blind man not to see that. But everything's going pretty good, and thank you very much because, Ms. Gavin, we may not see eye to eye on things, but you did support that, and I'm happy for that. But anyway, the second thing I want to talk to you about, a lady came to me and asked me, the next time I come to city council, to please ask the city council if you could look into these ladies that being incarcerated in the Department of Social Services is taking our kids and putting them in foster care. And then when they get out of incarcerating, they have to go to the judge to get their children back. It, it, it makes me feel like they're down on the border somewhere. But one lady stayed incarcerated for sixty days. She couldn't find her two kids. They had put them in foster, foster care. When she went to Department of Social Services, they told her that she had to go to court, to the judge, and all this stuff, and she had family members that they could have, you know, asked to keep her children. So she asked me if y'all could look into it. I don't know what else to tell her, but just that I'm, I'm the messenger. So if you can do that, it might save a whole lot of heartache here. Charlottesville is going through a lot of stuff now, and it's, it's, it's dropping on one race. Y'all got to wake up and smell the coffee because everyone in race is getting tired. Okay?
Thank you. Kate Fraley.
Hi, I'm Kate Fraley. I'm a city resident, mayor Walker, members of city council. I'm here to talk about the PCRB as an individual and also as a member of the police, the People's Coalition. The decisions you will be making about the civilian review board are very important decisions for our community. Your support of a strong police civilian review board will be concrete evidence that problems of disproportionality and inequity are being taken seriously. I appreciate the hard work the CRB did to create sound bylaws and police oversight. There she is. Thank you very much. As you heard from the folks from Fairfax, it is important to have staff support, transparency, and independence. Also, you heard that there is evidence, academic evidence, that police oversight boards have a positive impact on disproportionate minority contact when their oversight ability is broad. It is important that the Charlottesville Civilian Review Board be able to investigate complaints. I think my tax dollars would be well spent on a strong PCRB. Charlottesville has a long history of police problems. Those problems of disproportionate stop and frisk continue, and the consultant's draft report of the research on adult disproportionate minority contact in our community includes evidence of not only disproportionality, but also shows evidence of disparities throughout the criminal system. It is vital that civilians have an avenue for civilian oversight and a place to trust with their complaints. Do not water down the bylaws presented to you. Do not water down the bylaws presented to you from the first PCRB. Make it strong, supported, independent and able to investigate. Please support the way the bylaws are written. And I'd like to ask if you can tell us now what the next steps about this are. Will you have another work session? Will you have a public meeting? Will you bring it to council in two weeks and have a public hearing? Please tell us what's going to happen next.
In answer to your question, we're anticipating to have at the next council meeting a draft of the bylaws as well as the ordinance for the council's consideration on a first reading.
Thank you. Shanice Gray?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Shanice Gray and I reside in Charlottesville. I would like to take time to speak about the lack of affordable housing in the city. I was born in Charlottesville and lived in Prospect until I was 12 years old before my parents purchased a home off of Ridge Street where I currently reside because rent is too expensive for me to live comfortably on my own here in the city. I've been looking into purchasing a home and I'm now aware that I can't afford to buy a home in the city because of the lack of affordability. I love Charlottesville and all that it has to offer. I love the city so much that I decided to stay and attend UVA after graduating. I graduated in 2011 with a master's degree in elementary education. I taught at Yancey Elementary for four years before venturing outside of my comfort zone. I moved to Northern Virginia for two years, but there's no place like home, so I moved back home to Charlottesville. I would love for my children to attend Barrett, Johnson, Walker, Beaufort and CHS, just like I did. But without affordable homeownership options, it's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanisha Hatta? Ms. Nikia? Nikia, is she here?
Oh, yeah, she... No, we decided we're not going to go that route. Cutting into my previous...
Well, there's two names on the paper, just checking.
No, she's not coming, so we're not going to discuss that tonight. That's a different issue. First off, great job on the trolley, the residents of Midway Manor. As Mary said, that were aware to, you know, see it and knew about it. They're very happy about that. Number two is the young lady with the baby that was here. There's no baby changing station in the bathroom. Y'all should probably try to put one in there. People do bring kids now, you know, sometimes. I think we need to be a family-friendly restroom in the government building. And then, oh, fund the CRB. I agree with that. And then the last thing I want to talk about is this petition for Chief Brackney. Because I feel like after August 11th and 12th, a lot of you that were here on the podium then, sat on this podium and you yourself said something about assault rifles after we seen so many walking in the park. I just think it would be really beneficial if you guys that are in this position were standing behind your people when they make statements or they say something. That kind of do make sense after what we went through on August 11th and 12th. Like, none of us felt comfortable with assault rifles in the park on August 12th. You spoke on it after August 12th. You had a million things to say after August 12th. I don't know if that was y'all former kind of, you know, wanting to take accountability whatsoever or if it was fake accountability or whatever. But when she go on the news and she make a statement and then people signing this petition to like get her fired, like, learn to stand behind your people. Because if I work for the city, and I'm not speaking for her, but I'm going to speak on behalf of her because I don't know how she feel or whatever after it. But if I work for the city, I would feel some type of way. Like, y'all love taking a backseat when people really stand up and say something that really do make sense. But when it's the popular thing to do, when every news station here, you want to seem like you doing the right thing or you want to make it look like you standing behind what somebody, you know, the changes that we want to make based off of, you know, what all happened August 11th and 12th. But in reality, y'all don't because nobody protected her for saying that, not one person. And I'm not saying, like, don't get me wrong, we all have our issues. She's not perfect, okay, I get that. But when she got on the news and said that, y'all should have stood behind her. Honestly, you should have stood behind her. Because you two were here in '17. Y'all sat up here and said something about assault rifles after August 11th and 12th. So it just, I'm just saying from, like, it just seemed like black people always get the bad end of the stick. Stop painting that image and then we can stop saying, "Black people getting treated this way, black people being treated that way," or black, you know, like, y'all make it a color thing. Y'all paint the picture. So I'm just asking, I hope y'all do better and maybe y'all do a press release or a news conference and say how you do stand behind your chief of police and what she said about assault rifles.
So I'll just say for myself, most of those signatures for the petition, they were from outside of the area.
Some locals do.
Well, but I think it's important to note that. I mean, it's not something that I took seriously. I agree with the statements that she made and we knew that she was going to make them. So I don't think, unless I missed something...
Mayor Walker, if I may add, that Councilor Bellamy and I are in the, on the committee for the legislative request to the General Assembly. And it'll be really loud and clear in that packet, our position on assault rifles. And that is our, we were repeatedly asked to have a ban in the public areas. And so that's going to be coming, I believe, at the end of October, beginning of November. So that is how, that's going to be a public statement. And the council will get a chance to discuss it, change anything, vote on it, but that will be a public statement.
Sina McGill?
Hello, Sina McGill, Anderson Street in Charlottesville. I just wanted to bring forward a few concerns that the 10th and Page Neighborhood Association came up, brought forward the other day. The trucks on 8th Street continue to be a problem with deliveries just letting you know. Again, I know this is a difficult issue because the larger trucks can't pull in to the main parking lot for the restaurant, but a lot of the smaller trucks are also not doing that. It's, I'm just really, a lot of neighbors are very worried that someone's going to get hurt soon because of the way it blocks traffic and the way it blocks visualization. Also, there has been a request a number of times over the last year for an audible signal at the Preston Rose Hill. There is a 94-year-old gentleman who lives there, who is nearly blind, who needs that, as well as another younger gentleman who is legally blind, who would really appreciate the audible signal saying that goes walk, walk. Preston and Rose Hill. And then Mr. Gaines had brought forward that the John West placard is in a very hard-to-see place and kind of just in the middle of nowhere. And that it would make more sense if at some point that got moved over towards Hardy Drive, where I guess Mr. West had a large impact. I just said I would bring these forward, so thank you very much for your time and thank you for your work on affordable housing.
David Redding?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, councilors. I'm David Redding and I'm with Eco Village Charlottesville, 480 Ryale Road East. The food initiative warrants the city council's continued support. They've brought in some additional money and it looks like it's going quite well. I'm a member of Food Not Bombs and we provide food every Sunday for free for 100-plus people at Tonsler Park. We also cook a meal to feed people and build community. The food that we give away is gleaned from Whole Foods, Rebecca's, Food Lion, The Farmer's Market, Alomar Bakery, Great Harvest Bakery, as well as other organizations. We are very grateful for the support of the Haven. We do all this as a volunteer basis. We always welcome people to assist us with our mission, so we're always looking for volunteers. And I want to thank all the supporters of the Saturday Seaville Farmer's Market. It has been voted the best farmer's market in the southeast this year.
Congratulations.
Yes, that's quite good. One thing we have to do with, at the Farmer's Market, is we have to allow a better space for the nonprofits. I don't know if you go to the Farmer's Market or not, but it is where the porta-potties are in a fenced-in area. So only the people who are headed towards the porta-potties will see anything for the nonprofits. And so we really need to make a change there. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Chauncey Banks? Myra Anderson?
Good evening. I'm Myra Anderson. I live 2517 Hyjolik Road. So this week is actually Mental Health Awareness Week. And so I thought that since I'm someone who has struggled with mental health issues, depression and post-traumatic stress disorder, since I was probably 12 years old, that I'd give you a little insight on mental health and what my experience has been as an African American. Traditionally, African Americans, a high percentage, do not engage in mental health services. So I want you to keep this in mind because almost every study that comes before you has not had an adequate amount of African Americans represented in this study. For example, one of the benchmark studies for trauma is the ACE Study, Adverse Childhood Experiences. This study was conducted, less than 5% of the people were African American. Everyone had a college education that was in the study and so, and everyone had insurance. Now, you think about African Americans in general, you can get knocked out of any one of those categories. So my point is that not only are African Americans not engaging in mental health services, but the ones who do have been met with microaggressions, have been met with a system that is not culturally competent and sometimes have chose, based on that and the history of how African Americans have historically been treated in the medical profession, have chose not to engage. So since this is Mental Health Awareness Month, I want to bring, re-bring your attention to the fact that we need culturally competent services in this community. It's not enough to have a black counselor in this organization or that organization because no matter what your mental health condition is, when you add on the added layer of trauma, racism, systemic and structural, it's a whole nother level. We had a Sankofa Center about 15 or 20 years ago. I'm urging you, I'm urging you, and I will keep urging you, right, to consider recreating. We need our own space to heal and we cannot do that healing when the same people who oppressed us are the ones that we are supposed to talk to this about. So I sincerely hope that you will consider that and also trauma services. We just had this Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's trauma right there. And there are no service providers in town, including Sarah, who are providing long-term services to trauma survivors who did not ask for that trauma upon them. But you, as a city, need to send, make a commitment to send to these people who are struggling that we will provide the space for you to heal. It will be culturally competent and we have a commitment to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Scott? No, that's not Larry. Katie Zing? All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak? We have a couple more spots.
Oh, great.
No one else? All right, so we're...
Nancy Carpenter, city resident. I just want to share a story because a story is always good when you're talking about spending money with the calf and how important it is to house a lot of different cohorts in this community. Recently, someone who was practically homeless was housed through a program. And so, had been outside for a number of years, I would say between five and 10. So when you first come inside those four walls, it takes a while to transition in your mind, the space that you have out there versus what the walls provide. So that person still had friends who were at the campsite that they were living at. And recently, after having been housed for about three weeks, decided that they wanted to go out, visit friends and maybe stay at that campsite overnight. And so they went and the other person visited, decided to, his tent, the tent was still there. I think the sleeping bags, blankets, whatever it is to provide bedroll space, laid down to perhaps rest overnight. After about an hour or so, he told the case manager that, you know what, I decided I wanted to go home. And that's what this calf means. That's what a couple of the decisions at the hack means to a lot of people here in this community home. So thank you for the bold funding and hopefully you'll continue that on. And I just wanted to share that story to let you know what this means to some people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, so we're going to break until 10 till? That's 15 minutes.
I was trying, man.
Heard I call this meeting back to order?
What happened?
First up, we have a public hearing ordinance to release a portion of sewer easement, McIntyre Plaza, first of two readings. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lauren Hildebrand. I'm the Director of Utilities. Mayor and councilors, in 2015, the city was granted a 20-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement cross-property known as McIntyre Plaza at the end of Allied Street. The development is owned by Seaville Business Park LLC. Seaville Business Park has requested the city vacate a portion of an easement in order to accommodate a sign structure. The sewer line in the easement carries sewage from the buildings within the development, and those flows are carried to a sewer line within the Allied Street right away. Additional language has been proposed in the recommendation that includes the owner will maintain the sewer line for his development on the property and within the Allied Street right away. Utilities and Neighborhood Development Services have reviewed the request and confirmed the sewer line is not needed for public use. A public hearing is required by law that gives the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed conveyance of a property interest. Staff recommends council approve the ordinance vacating a portion of a sanitary sewer line within the McIntyre Plaza, conditional that the owner maintains the existing sewer lines from the buildings in the development to the public sewer main within Allied Street. And any existing sewer lines within the vacated easement will be the property of the owner. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
I'm gonna get, Michael Payne, city resident. I'm gonna get a little creative here, hopefully you won't be angry with me. But I don't have any strong opinions on this project, but I think with this project, it's important to be aware of impacts of infrastructure and projects on nearby developments, like for example, the special use permit you'll be voting on for the West Main Street development later, which will have a strong, direct impact on First Baptist Church, one of the most historic buildings and important community spaces in our city. And like how in this process, you've engaged with nearby residents and owners, I hope you will take seriously the concerns that the First Baptist congregation has about that project and seek to take their lead on their concerns about what that special use permit could have on that historic building and the character of that community space and in the larger context of what's happening in West Main Street. So, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on the sewer easement for McIntyre Plaza? No? Okay, gonna close the public hearing. Council, any discussion?
Mayor can make a motion.
Okay.
Mayor, oh, oh, good.
Yeah, so a no vote, but just that we wanted to move it to the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Thanks, sorry.
Okay. So we just?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, comprehensive signage plan for Hillsdale Place, first of one reading.
Good evening. This is a request for a comprehensive signage plan. It is for the Hillsdale Place, which is a proposed retail center at the intersection of 29 and Hydraulic. It will reuse the space of the former Kmart and Gold's Gym. Ten tenants are anticipated. They're anchored on the west end by a 40,000-square-foot store, at the east end by a planned 20,000-square-foot store with smaller stores in the middle. The signage plan will regulate signs for the tenants and includes three monument signs on the site. Per city code, applicants for a development is subject to both a site plan review and design review, may request approval of a comprehensive signage plan. These plans are defined, they're written plan detailing the size, I'm sorry, the type, quantity, size, shape, color, and location of all signs within the development, and where the number, characteristic, and location of the signs do not comply with the sign regulations. Comprehensive signage plans are approved by you all, the council, upon a determination that A) there is good reason for deviating from strict application of the sign regs, and B) the comprehensive signage plan as proposed will serve the public purposes and objectives at least as well or better than a signage that would otherwise be permitted. This plan will allow six types of signage as defined by the city: wall signs, canopy signs, projecting signs, monument signs, sandwich board signs, and temporary signs. At the September 10, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, they reviewed this item and provided recommendations which have been incorporated into the plan that you all are reviewing tonight. The commission recommended that the maximum aggregate sign area for the retail center as a whole would be 1,050 square feet. That would be for all the wall signs, canopy signs, projecting signs, and the under-canopy signs. They also suggested or recommended for each tenant that the aggregate signage area be as follows. For tenant one, which is the large store at the west end, a maximum aggregate of 300 square feet of signage. For tenants two through nine in the middle, the maximum aggregate per tenant would be 75 square feet. And for tenant 10, which is at the eastern end, the aggregate would be no greater than 150 square feet. And the commission also supported three conditions that were proposed by staff, the clarification that no more than three of the wall signs will be installed at a height of 28 feet above the ground, and that exceeds the normal reg of 20 square foot, I'm sorry, 20 feet. Got square feet too much in my head here. The second were conditions that related to sandwich signs on the site, and the third was including some specific citations of the city's sign regulations. I believe the applicant's here, if you have any questions, you have anything for me?
Okay. Any questions? Council members? No? All right. Is there a motion?
I move adopt resolution approving the comprehensive signage plan for Hillsdale Place.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Rock, I just have a brief comment. I will support this signage plan. It would work with or without the proposed changes in zoning that were made two years ago in the hydraulic small-area plan. I do think, though, that we need to beginning to get really serious about turning that parking lot into a place where people can live, raise families, and work as well. Again, we can, we seem to make progress on the little things, but moving forward, I hope that we actually do start implementing that hydraulic plan. That's all I have to say. And this signage plan can work either way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. No further discussion? All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 602 to 616, West Main special use permit, request for a mixed-use building, first of one reading.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Brian Haleska, Principal Planner for the Department of Neighborhood Development Services. As you stated, this is a special use permit request for a property located at 612 West Main Street, also known as the University Tire and Auto Building. This was heard at the Planning Commission's meeting on August 13th, and they recommended approval of this with your attached resolution, although we do need to note some changes in that resolution as it was not transcribed entirely correctly. Condition 1B, building height shall not exceed, shall not exceed a height of 52 feet. It was listed as four stories in your staff report. Also, Item 4B, under that, the landowner shall engage the engineer who performed the baseline survey to prepare a protective plan to be followed by all persons performing work within the development site that shall include seismic monitoring or other specific monitoring measures of the adjacent property as recommended by the engineer preparing the protective plan and minimally include, strike the word "shall" there, installation, and so on, and so on. Both the applicant and the commission raised these corrections, so I don't think there's any debate between the two of them as to whether or not it should be in here. One item that you did receive correspondence from the applicant that they would like further consideration on was the recommendation from the Planning Commission that a minimum of 53 parking spaces be constructed on the site. That would be Item 1E, Condition 1E on your staff report. So that would require, as drafted, it would require that there be 53 spaces on the site regardless of the minimum parking required by the building as it goes through the site plan process. So the applicant has requested some consideration or possibly modification of that to better reflect their building plans. Staff is in support of that modification. We have a minimum parking requirement that offers some flexibility, so we don't feel that, you know, any change to this will negatively impact the neighborhood or the surrounding or the property itself, but the applicant may want to discuss that further in front of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a question, and it might be echoed by other councilors, but what is, what does the formula say the number of parking spaces needs to be?
The property is located in the parking modified zone, so the parking modified zone permits one space per residential unit. That is a difference from the rest of the city where if your units would have three or four bedrooms, they'd be required to have two spaces. So just one space per residential unit in the parking modified zone. Additionally, any commercial development in the parking modified zone, we cut the required parking that would normally be required outside the zone in half. So if your commercial development would require 10 spaces throughout most of the city, it's only a requirement of five. Additionally, any units that are 5,000 square feet or less, the parking is, they're exempt from any parking requirement. And the parking modified zone allows you to meet that parking either onsite, offsite, or potentially pay into a transit fund or a parking fund. There's some regulations about that. This applicant is the same applicant that saw, came before you for 600 West Main Street, and they provided some of that parking offsite in addition to their onsite obligations.
What's the total, what's the total number that the formula gets us?
Until they actually have a final site plan that's allocated the spaces within the building, we won't have a final number. So the applicant, I think, is saying that 53 would be difficult with the BAR review of this building to accommodate in that basement floor plate. They certainly are willing to put as many spaces as they can, because they control them. The final number will depend on how many floors they do commercial, how many they do residential. But even if you were to strike this condition entirely, there's, that parking modified regulation is still there, they still have to meet whatever that minimum is required under the zone.
Do they have to meet it onsite?
They have the option to meet it onsite.
But we could require it onsite?
They could meet. That could be a way to reframe this condition, certainly, if the applicant is willing to commit to that.
Yeah, the parking in that area is a challenge. And so, and I think that's, you know, from what I remember of the Planning Commission discussion, that was a big point for them. The history of the parking modified zoning, like what's, why was it reduced?
The parking modified zone, so years ago, we had a parking exempt zone, and it stretched, most of downtown was included in the parking exempt zone, it stretched all the way down West Main and even included the corner. At some point, there were a few developments that were proposed, I think, with minimal or almost no parking, and that led to a movement to modify our parking exempt zone and divide it. It's divided into three zones. The urban core zone is still around the mall, that's still, we don't require any parking for byright developments there. The parking modified zone is kind of what left, was what was left over. The corner was carved out, there's a corner parking zone, you don't see that very often because not much gets built there. But the remainder of that was the parking modified zone, so that's where it came from. We didn't want to do 100% of what's required throughout the city, but we did want to require some parking in this area and give people flexibility to meet it in a number of ways.
That's just based on, like, walkability in those areas?
I think so, and also trying to, you know, viewing West Main Street as a multimodal corridor, you wanna, if you're trying to de-emphasize cars, you know, accommodating more and more of them means you get more and more of them.
If we do this math then, right, so there's 55 units there, so your ordinance would say the one bedrooms, the ones that are over 500 square feet would have to have one space per unit. So if you're doing 40, that means that at least 15 of them are gonna have to be kind of micro-units?
Possibly, you know, there's some, I think the applicant's also considering some other modifications that you have available to you in the code in terms of reductions, so proximity to bus stops, bike parking above and beyond what we minimally require in that zone. So there are a number of ways that they can, or, you know, there's the not well-defined, but kind of shared parking between the commercial and residential units in this zone that might be a little, or this location that might be a little bit of a stretch, because I would assume the residents are warehousing their cars, not moving them frequently to go to work.
And they also have spaces in the Fourth Street parking garage with 600 West Main?
They do, yes.
And have those been leased up? Have those leased up?
I believe, I'd have to ask the applicant, I know they do, they did execute the agreement with the Jefferson School for those spaces, so they do have them available. How they've leased them is a private side matter that they maybe can talk to.
And I'm concerned about that aspect of it, too, in terms of parking, especially since we have the nonprofit that reached out about parking in the area about using that as an option.
That's right, for me, it's just, I think it would be nice to make sure that the parking that is required is all done onsite, and that we're not exacerbate, getting it even more, more challenging outside of that footpath, like.
And that, if I may, that leads to the question then, why was there a numerical kind of description to begin with? Why wasn't it just based on required parking must be onsite? Why wasn't that the condition?
The applicant's initial drawings showed a floor plate and with striped spaces that totaled 53. So you kind of get into this question of how much of that plan is, how much of that detail can you carry forward into the plan? So I think, just having talked to the applicant about this, I think if they had to do it over again, they'd probably just show a full, like, gray box on there and say, we can accommodate a full floor of parking below grade to serve this building. How many spaces that is is still to be decided. They striped it out at 53, that was what was shown at a community meeting, and our intention with any of these applications is that the conditions reflect the building that was presented, and that detail be captured. So in hindsight, the engineering of that floor is probably gonna be extremely difficult to get those spaces. The applicant can talk to that. They've also, like I said, they've got BAR review, one of the items that the BAR mentioned when they first saw this was trying to minimize the visual impact of that garage opening on West Main, which we're all very concerned about. So that may push it back, and getting the ramp down there, you may start losing spaces through that. So I think the floor plate was a bit, you know, aspirational, and they couldn't, they're a little concerned they're gonna be able to meet that number.
But this could come back before us, right, if there needed to be changes? If there needed to be changes based on them going before the BAR and...
Based on our decision, I'm pretty sure it will.
It, it, it could.
Based on which way we go.
Yeah, if they can't make it work with the condition, they could certainly ask for it, but I think that's the reason they're here now, is they know they can't make that. But I would, I would defer to the applicant to get into more detail about that.
And I am sensitive to, like, different bodies putting different restrictions that almost make anything impossible to achieve. And I mean, much as like, you know, I would say with West Second, much as I have my own concerns about West Second, well, beyond that, what we found was that that market space, we wanted to maximize it to get as many market stalls, and yet the BAR wanted to have trees everywhere, which I also would enjoy, but that, we seem like sometimes we're competing against ourselves. So I'm very sensitive to that and the impact that has on people that are bringing projects forward and how many times they have to go around and around to get something that will absolutely work and be supported.
I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant explain the details.
Good evening. Mayor Walker, Mr. Manager, members of council, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is LJ Lopez with Milestone Partners. We're representative of the applicant. The applicant previously sent a memo and explained his absence. He apologizes he couldn't be here this evening to speak before you. He has a family personal commitment that he had to attend to. So thank you to staff for introing the project and giving the overview. I do want to step back and just highlight the process because I think the process leads to where we are. So as an SUP, that process, we have, one, a community meeting, two, we meet with the BAR, three, we go to the planning commission for a joint public hearing, and then four, we're here before you. So the project is touched several times throughout that process. The project will further be touched by the BAR several more times before we receive a certificate of appropriateness on a design to proceed forward and get a site plan approval to proceed forward with the project. That, several additional meetings at six hundred, we had the experience of the project that exists today on the adjacent site. We were there six or seven or eight times to work through the design process of exterior materials and outdoor terraces and mock-up panels and signage and the like to get the building that's there today. All of those decisions end up having impact on the design, the floor plate, one of which, as we talk about parking specifically and we think about six hundred as the case study example next door, there was preservation of two historic structures, contributing structures to the historic district onsite. Those structures didn't allow for an entire floor plate of the property below grade to provide parking. So we had to, in that instance, take advantage of the parking modified zone and the ability to satisfy the parking requirement for the project offsite. That wasn't desired. We'd like to provide our own parking onsite. Next door on the, on the project, the application that's here before you, we have that opportunity. We have the opportunity to provide all that parking onsite. The, the issue, the contention, the assertion that we have, and hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but in the application, the intent of a floor plate, a full floor plate, and identifying what a yield potential of fifty-three parking spaces was, was to illustrate that we could satisfy parking in its entirety per, any permutation of the zoning ordinance as parking is calculated onsite. There will be BAR design review that comes before, that will potentially have impact, and we know that already based on our one visit to the BAR. Two of the conditions that have come forward are articulation in the front building facade. They don't want one uniform facade of the building as a long street wall. Two, they want the garage door, the garage entrance to the vehicular floor plate, the parking level below, to be removed and set back from the street wall so that it is not imposing and vehicular on that pedestrian streetscape. Three, there's desire for open space and breaking up the building. And there's a mural that was recently painted as approved by the BAR on the Minimart building. That is an international muralist that's there, and so there's open space to preserve the view and sightline of that mural on there. That is going to have impact on the floor plate below and parking. And so as we move forward and as we anticipate what we will see at the BAR and what the realities of spaces onsite, you know, from a logistics and layout standpoint, fifty-three is going to be an unachievable number. And tying that to, again, in hindsight, we would have submitted our application differently and addressed the parking, you know, differently at the beginning. But nonetheless, here we are. Our intent is to provide all of our required zoning onsite. The condition that was submitted in the memo, I have copies of it here if that is helpful for anybody, is to provide a minimum of forty spaces. Should the calculation of the zoning ordinance as we submit our site plan require more, we will provide more, and that will be provided onsite. So we've offered that, and I can provide a copy of that if anyone is interested in and happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Thanks for that clarification, because that, that was a little bit lost on me, that, that that was a minimum, but that you would, you would provide onsite parking as required by the ordinance?
Correct. If for whatever reason, as the parking modified zone has provision for bike spaces onsite and distance to the bus stop, multimodal transportation, you can get parking reductions. Say, for example, our unit mix and the parking reductions yielded less than forty, we would provide a minimum of forty. If it yielded more than forty, say it was forty-five, we would provide forty-five and those forty-five would be onsite. Tying it to fifty-three as a specific and unwavering number poses a situation where we would not be able to meet it. We would work through the process and we would return before you to demonstrate that. And so felt it appropriate to deal with that more proactively on the front end. So thank you for your consideration.
And my perspective on that is if you can achieve forty-five, I would just want you to achieve forty-five. I want you to maximize the number of spaces that you can provide onsite. Because at that point, whether it's yielded or not, if you can provide more than forty, I would, I'm trying to figure out how we can word it because I would want you to...
Or more than forty-five, right?
I'm sorry?
Or more than forty-five.
Whatever that number is, however you can do to maximize it.
A maximization, and I gave some consideration to, to that language as well, and maybe that's a post-this, but demonstration to the satisfaction of the Director of NDS that we've maximized parking, you know, onsite as included within that condition. But that, that is the intent.
But even taken into consideration, I know you gave a list, but even taken in consideration, the mural that's on the other building, I mean, I wouldn't want you to not meet the parking requirements so that, because you all could have chosen to put that on a different space, maybe on the new building.
Well, the, the feedback that we heard from the BAR was an articulated front street wall, and that open space plays into that, so it may not be there on that building with the mural, but it would have been someplace, and so that, their design feedback and consideration plays into that happens to satisfy and is a design consideration now to, to work around. Again, to, to highlight again, the parking matrix and calculation for, within the zoning ordinance, there's a unit mix and a yield of residential and commercial, and that will yield a number with available reductions. At fifty-three, we know the available reductions will put that at less than fifty-three. Could be forty-five, it could be forty-seven. What we intend to do is to maximize that parking onsite and provide the parking onsite and remove the option and the flexibility within the zoning ordinance to provide that parking offsite. And as is identified on six hundred, because of the preservation of the two historic structures, we were not able to provide the parking onsite. We had to seek offsite parking in order to meet the zoning ordinance. That offsite parking is a revenue stream that's leased spaces at Jefferson School. Understand that there are parking constraints in the district, and our intent long-term through the drafting of that agreement with Jefferson School, those are available for reevaluation every five years based on parking concerns and considerations and changes and modifications as may have, you know, come forward in that interim five-year period. So as the two properties are adjacent to each other under joint ownership, with all the spaces being satisfied onsite, we should look at in five years a utilization of what the six hundred West Main spaces are and what their utilization is. And if we can manage between the two projects, all onsite parking within their utilization and free up those spaces at Jefferson School, we're open to, and, and the document that we did for the long-term lease agreement provides for that. So we're open to and looking to manage and sustain our parking and provide our parking needs onsite.
So are those spaces leased up? What's the parking situation at the building now?
The building is currently twenty percent leased, so we're not fully occupied. The leases are, excuse me, the Jefferson School parking spaces are leased, they're under long-term lease. We do, we have executed that agreement and had to do so as part of our final occupancy process and provide evidence of that. So we are renting those, we're making those monthly payments. They're currently not being utilized by residents of, of the project. I couldn't, that's anecdotal based on twenty percent and a very short window, so I think we need more longer-term data to make a broader assessment of that. Thank you.
I'm just kind of curious what staff's position is and how we should be wording something that kind of provides some, some of the flexibility or whoever wants to weigh in, I'm just...
I understand the nu, the numeracy question, but I think it's also, it sounds like, and please, I apologize if, if I'm assuming too much, but it seems like the council would like to ensure that all the parking requirements occur onsite.
Yes.
And I think the numeracy question's a different story, but you can simply add on the condition of condition one E at the end, a sentence, "All parking required for the project per the ordinance shall be located onsite." I don't believe the applicant has any objection to adding that language onto the condition, if that's the council's.
And it would have to delete the fifty-three parking spaces?
Well, I'm going to leave that, that to you all. I mean, it's, it sounds like the applicant is saying that fifty-three will not occur at that site.
But even the per, the parking modified zone, that sounds like something, is that something that we would revisit under the current zoning changes? I know that we may not be able to factor that in now, but that doesn't sound, I mean, it sounds like we are living in an ideal world with this parking modified zone that isn't happening, people are still driving.
I think if there's, if there's a movement to edit the parking requirements within the city, that would be something that would come out of a comprehensive plan vision that would inform staff to do a review, but it would be the entire area. I mean, at this point, the parking modified zone is, is, you know, you, they are required to provide less parking than they would if this building were located, you know, two blocks to the south. So it is doing something to that effect of what we're trying to aim for. Whether those numbers are right, that's a bigger discussion that needs to be happening citywide.
Yeah, I have an anecdotal piece on this, so I, you know, I lived for a long time, had for ten years a house that was in a, in a PUD that was part of this, this parking right on, on Fifth Street. And so it was six units with two or three bedrooms and only seven spaces between them, and one of them was a handicap space, you know, that everybody parked in anyway. But it was, and it was a real issue, was, you know, some landlords, when they, they had to rent other spaces for people to use. But on the other hand, it really did lead people who wanted to live there, a lot of them had one car or two cars, they had to park on the street. But it did lead people to try and, you know, so to the extent, to try and have fewer cars because they kind of had to, but it was uncomfortable. So I think what we're doing here as a matter of policy is, is enacting plans that, that go, that are in accordance with what the city tried to do when we did this in this corridor, you know, a long time ago, just to try and decrease a very car-heavy, but I'm not going to say it was easy. We had this debate about somewhere else in Belmont, I think, if I remember, and it's, it's not easy.
Carlton Avenue.
Yeah, and then there, that's right, I think that's right. But to me, you know, to me, the major thing is what does the formula as it exists now dictate? And if it's forty rather than fifty-three with the plans, it seems like what it should be, but I think we should go eyes wide open as all these things happen on West Main Street. It is a, you know, the, the city should, should be guiding tenants and owners, like, you got to plan ahead because if you take up a, you know, you rent one of these places and you, all of a sudden you want another car, it's going to be hard. And I, my, my expectation is a lot of streets around there will do permit parking over the next year is because they're going to need to, like they've done in other places. So they're going to prevent people from parking on the, on the street, which they should. That's their right under the...
So I think, for me, it's twofold, I'm sorry, Councilor Galvin, it's twofold. I think, again, if the formula calls for forty, then that's kind of where we need to be, but I think we have to be very careful about projects such as this one specifically when we talk about parking. And I know that there's an emphasis for the city to move towards being multimodal and a wide variety of different ways, encouraging people to ride bikes, walk, bike, so forth. However, there's unintended consequences to the affordable housing piece when we think about people saying, well, you only can have, or essentially by default, you're only going to be able to have one car if you live here. So if you have a mother who, or a family of four and they potentially need two cars, this is not going to be a housing option for them.
It's not a housing option anyway.
Well, well, I think the blueprint, the footprint of the neighborhood right now is there's still folks who've been here, still live there, but I think, yeah, this...
No, I'm talking about this particular development.
This particular project, it won't be, the development won't be an option, I agree. But, but even if those who may have the means to live there, you're still boxing them out to a certain extent because it's, if I have the means to be able to afford to live there, but I, I have to, I only can drive one car, like my wife and I, we have, we have two cars, I mean, we have four children. We have to have SUV and we need a regular car, or, well, we have three cars. So I mean, we, this wouldn't be an option for us. And I know that, and I mean, again, we're trying to develop different kinds of housing models, but we, we have to be cognizant when we're thinking about these decisions.
If I may just add something?
Sure.
At the same time, decreasing the need for parking, structured parking is one way to make the project more affordable, because one, one parking space costs, structured parking spaces is at least twenty thousand dollars to build, and that factors into the cost of the building. So I think the other important thing to point out is that they're charging for parking spaces. So this isn't something that's inherently part of the project, people have to consciously buy the parking space. So, and that, when we read the Housing Needs Assessment Study in twenty eighteen, April twenty eighteen, that was one of the recommendations or one of the observations that Anita Morrison made, that in order to drive down the cost of housing, you got to drive down the amount of structured parking you put into a building. And one way to do that is that you charge people per space. It's not something that's folded into their rent like a utility. So again, not, this is, this is responding to our ordinance that we have written in terms of affordable housing. As a special use permit, there is the choice of building onsite, offsite, or put money in the, in the Shaw's affordable housing fund. But, right, and that's a formula. And so I think to Councilor Signer's point, we're looking at what the formula is requiring us to do, and what we can do in this resolution is just say that it's got to be provided onsite as per the ordinance. It seems to me any number we put in there feels arbitrary, and I just don't understand where the fifty-three came from other than it was, it was a drawn out there as a hypothetical, but it's not even required. And yet, they won't know what the required parking is until they really do the unit mix and the square footage mix of the retail. That's why even the forty seems arbitrary, except it was just, I know, gives some comfort to the, to the, to everyone in the area that there's at least a floor. And I'm willing to go with that, but is it forty-five, four, I mean, I don't know where, where you, where you can determine... I mean, I don't know where, where you, where you can determine that.
I would just wanna remind you that in terms of affordability, I think if I remember correctly, these units will start at about 1,400 and go up to 4,100, right? So, I don't think that's a...
And I wasn't, I was just saying that that's the, the cost of structured parking's expensive.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're talking about just following the formulas? I'm just trying to figure, I just want some kind of teeth just to say that I would really want you to maximize the amount of spaces you can put into this floor plate.
My question is, what would, so if we say 53 spaces and they do, staff can ensure that they've done everything they possibly could to maximize the space and it's only 48, how difficult is that to come back to us and say, based on everything they've done, staff can tell council with certainty that they can't meet the 53?
They, they would have to file for an amendment to their special use permit. That's, that's the process, and it would go before the planning commission, and then it would come back before council.
So, are you all not comfortable with that process?
Well, they already know they cannot do 53, so I don't wanna already set them up for, like, no matter what, you're gonna have to come back through this whole process again. I'm just trying to understand, is there any language you can put in there that obviously they're meeting all of the needs, but they're also being responsible, like he offered, do we get approval from the city manager, from NDS, like that you have max, I don't know? What can we do to assure that every possible space for parking has been utilized?
So, the planning commission, and we still got an email today that they feel at this 53.
That was one, one member of the planning commission.
I understand, but it was a, even, we were at the discussion, right?
We were at the, that was during, there was two different discussions. The one discussion was largely based on the seismic, like the protecting the structures, yeah.
Which, that made those changes.
Just, the, the, the number that the formula would dictate with the amount of units that they're planned is, according to staff, is it 40?
Well, we don't know the number yet. They're all mixed, yeah.
Ms., what's the number that you estimate with your...
So, we, we put forward in the memo a number of 40 spaces, and we calculated that out, that was page three or four of that memo in the exhibit. That calculation took into account concessions or considerations for the bus stop, for bike parking onsite, and others as they may be available, and that yielded 40.
I guess I would just like to know is staff's assessment that that's correct? With, on those facts, because that's what we can deal with, is that the right number on our formulas? With, with the number of units that they're talking about now, if it's changed, what does the formula say?
I mean, typically, the parking requirements are something that's shown on a site plan and going through the site plan process. One thing we can say is the planning commission does look at all site plans that have a special use permit, an active special use permit on them. So, that item would come back to the planning commission for some level of review of that site plan. We'd certainly in the staff report call out, you know, this particular issue because so much time has been spent on it. As, you know, as staff, until we have an actual final site plan submission to us that lists out those units and kinda does that parking calculation, I can't tell you if 40 is the minimum or not. If it was 45, they'd probably add additional units because the floor plate was accommodating those. So, you know, I don't, I can't guarantee that it's gonna work until I see the interior of this, of the space.
But just with the numbers that they provided, that they're planning on now, is that, is 40 the right, the accurate number with the bus stop and with the different, you know?
Yes.
Okay, so, so 40 is the number with what the, the formula would dictate with the actual plan right now? I mean, that's relevant to me, I think.
Right, I think it can change, I think we shouldn't be stuck on a number, but more on the process and the caption.
Maybe there's a language, maybe there's language that says, "But shall work with staff to maximize the, the parking onsite..."
It's all onsite.
"...to the greatest extent possible." I don't know. I, that's up to Mayor with, whether he wants to come up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. To address the concerns, what I've heard, and parking is a concern, we want to remove the option within the zoning ordinance to provide that parking offsite, taking capacity out of other parking lots in the district, which we did not intend to do in 600, but because of the historic preservation of those buildings, we, we had to, to satisfy. Here, we have the option to not do that. We're okay to remove that option and condition. We're comfortable with a floor of 40, so the minimum number of parking spaces to be provided if we're gonna gravitate towards a number. But from a process standpoint, to Councilor Hill's point of maximizing those spaces onsite, as we do have to bring a site plan back to the planning commission, perhaps I might offer different language or a different checkpoint in that we have maximized parking to the satisfaction of the planning commission at the time that, so they will review that site plan, they'll see that floor plate, and there's a verification and checkpoint that, that we have maximized it. That, that is our intent to do it onsite and maximize that parking, if, even if it is in excess of what the formula is. We would not arbitrarily reduce that below or build less as a result, if we could maximize it onsite. And so, that may be an alternative. From a process standpoint, the, if we went forward with 53, as I understand it, and Mr. Blair highlighted, we would have to amend, and that's a fee, a community meeting, BAR, Planning Commission, joint public hearing, and then back here. It would seem like we could figure that out hopefully tonight, as opposed to knowingly go and set ourselves up to return in that process.
We'd delay the process.
Thank you.
Just hold the question.
Mr. Blair, yeah.
Oh, a couple things, and, and just to go over, just to make sure we're all on the same page. The applicant did provide language that was sent to you all that, that states the following, "Underground parking shall be provided within a parking garage structure constructed underneath the building, which shall provide all parking required for the project per the ordinance, but no less than 40 parking spaces. No direct access shall be provided into the underground parking from the building's street wall along West Main Street." In addition to that, it seems like there have been two other, obviously, the, the number is, is again, the council can consider the nu, the number, but there seem to be two other aspects that should be added to the condition. One is, "All parking required for the project per the ordinance shall be located onsite." And the second is that all onsite parking shall be maximized by the, by the project to the satisfaction of the planning commission. Is that, again, without getting into the number, it seems like, the council, those two do start to put a more teeth into the idea of having the onsite parking maximized at the, the actual structure.
Yes. I'm fine with that.
Still keeping the minimum floor, but also saying that it's onsite and it's maximized to its fullest upon review and for review by planning commission. So, I don't know if we can craft that amendment.
So, so there's some concern about the word "shall," and I just, in terms of feedback, there's concern which they may not have to do the seismic evaluation of what may be happening structurally to First Baptist?
No, they have to do it now.
They have to.
It's "shall."
Yes, adjusted, that's what we're saying.
But I think it is important to underscore that.
The version that we have.
Yeah, we spent, no, they have to, based on the conversation and the planning commission approval, I mean, vote on this, make sure that that structure is sound and have the meetings with the occupants of the building about, you know, the building, and there's provision, or at least during the discussion, to make sure that if there is damage that is happening, that they have to stop and provide, and correct the, the damage to, to the building or whatever's causing it. So, that con, that conversation was had during the planning commission discussion, and it's in here. That was one of the protective plans that, under protective plan that we read, that it was nail up, that's nail online, but wasn't online originally.
There was some, some minor changes just to make actually more stronger language.
Because it was May before, instead of that "may" include versus "shall" include.
Now, it's more forceful.
Mayor Walker, I'm wondering if we should rate, read some of it? Read it out? So, this is going to be item four of the resolution. It says, "The landowner, including without limitation any person who is an agent, assignee, transferee, or successor in interested landowner..." Shall prepare protective plan. I'm sorry.
That's a diff, it's the protective plan.
Oh, that, oh, that was, oh, the one, well, that's B, right?
Right.
So, the protective plan does say "shall."
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, good.
That was the updated one we got today.
Yeah.
All right, so, may I only make a motion, recognizing these are our modifications to that motion?
Right, and I, I guess the other question again for the council's consideration is the number. When you make your motion, the, the motion currently in your packet has 53. The applicant has requested 40. That's one aspect. As to when you make your motion, do you want it to be the 53 that's included in the packet or the 40? And then also, to include the two provisions that I, that I read about, "The parking shall be located onsite and all onsite parking required per the ordinance shall be maximized to the satisfaction of the planning commission." Can I make, I'm sorry.
And I don't think we should feel comfortable, if we don't feel comfortable with the 53, we shouldn't feel comfortable with the 40 either.
It should be a calculation based on what's required by the ordinance.
Yeah, the applicant gave us other language when he was up here, that wasn't number specific.
But even with that, we're reducing what's required in a zone that's modified, so they will not have to offer the amount of parking that they would have to offer in another area, and I think we should take that into consideration too, because...
Right. So, putting any number there could be giving unintended consequences.
Could I make a motion? So, we tried it, so, although I don't have something written down to debate, but we do, we need a motion to be able to debate, right? So, I, if you could craft it, Mr. Blair, but I think the idea would be to amend it with the language that the applicant stated, which was to, I mean, you, you said it on the record here, whatever, that, whatever the planning commission would endorse at the time based on the site plan.
To maximize the floor.
To maximize. Yeah, and then with the other criteria that you said, that would be my motion, and then we can debate the motion, instead of trying to get consensus on the motion itself, which will be really hard.
Okay. Do you want me to, and you do not want the, the 40 in?
No, no.
Yeah, because we're maximizing the formula.
That's my motion. "Underground parking shall be provided within a parking garage structure constructed underneath the building, which shall provide all parking required for the project." And then we're gonna strike, "Project per the ordinance," and then we're gonna strike, "But no less than 40 parking spaces. No direct access shall be provided into the underground parking from the building's street wall along West Main Street. All parking required for the project per the ordinance shall be located onsite. All onsite parking required per the ordinance shall be maximized to the satisfaction of the planning commission."
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
I have no comments on my motion.
Are there any further comments? No, all right. No further discussion? All right, please vote.
I'm sorry.
All right. That carries four to one. All right, next we have a resolution, 503 Rugby Road Special Use Permit, first of one reading.
Good evening, council. I'm Joey Leonard, a city planner with NDS. This item for you is a special use permit request for a sorority with up to 37 residents at 503 Rugby Road. The Kappa Kappa Gamma Sorority is proposing to expand and renovate their existed, existing chapter house at this location. The property's own R3 historic and has a valid SUP for a sorority with up to 36 residents, which was granted in 1978. So, the applicant is asking for one additional resident. Modifications to front and side yard, regulations are also being requested to permit architectural elements and to allow the front and north side walls of the existing structure to remain in their current location after the renovation. The property lies in an architectural design control district, so the Board of Architectural Review made a recommendation on this SUP request. BAR unanimously recommends that granting this SUP will not have a adverse impact on the ADC district. Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval of this SUP application and proposes five conditions found in your packet. However, there's one slight change that should be made to the draft resolution that was provided. Condition one should read, "The boarding fraternity and sorority house used approved by this special use permit shall have a maximum of 37 residents." So, the last word should change from rooms to residents. 37 residents is what the planning commission recommended and what the applicant requested. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here tonight as well. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any clarifying questions from council?
I know that three of us have seen the presentation, Dr. Bellamy said he's not so concerned. Do we, can we forego that?
Yeah.
No offense. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, we're already sorry.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the sorority house at 503 Rugby Road for up to 37 occupants.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, please vote. All right, that carries five.
Easy enough for you.
Next, we have resolution allocation of fiscal year 2020 Shaw'sville Affordable Housing Funds, first of one reading. And there are two resolutions?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is John Salesen, I'm the new housing program coordinator.
Welcome.
Thank you. Tonight, I will be introducing the FY '20 CAF allocation recommendation from city staff in the HAC. The CAF NOFA was issued on June 10th and expired on July 18th, with applications due by 4:00 PM. The city received a total of five applications for FY funding. Funding. The applications range in scale from single-family homeowner rehabilitation projects to the new development of an 80-unit apartment complex. Each application met several of the city council's strategic housing goals, and they can be identified in each application that's in your package. All the applications align with goal 1.3 of the strategic plan, which is to increase affordable housing opportunities. All the applications also align with the city council's vision to provide quality housing opportunities for all. The HAC allocation subcommittee held two public meetings to discuss the applications that were received for CAF funding. After a first meeting on August 27th, the subcommittee created questions that they wanted each application, each applicant to answer. The questions were sent to each applicant through email, and the responses from applicants were then distributed back to the applicant, back to the subcommittee to discuss at the next meeting. On September 10th, the second meeting was held to discuss the application and responses from applicants, from the questions that were created during the August 27th meeting. After discussions, the HAC allocation subcommittee recommended fully funding the Virginia Supportive Housing Project to develop the crossings, too, with contingencies in place. It is recommended that city council... It is recommended that city council require Virginia Support of Housing to secure la-tech funding for FY20, have site control before submitting the la-tech application, or by March 15th, whichever date comes first, and to have an agreement in place with CRHA to provide voucher support for the occupants that will live at the crossings, too. Before December 31st, 2019, HAC also recommends providing $42,000 in CAF funding for AHEP. AHEP originally requested $600,000 in funding, which included $100,000 for the extensive rehabilitation of the historic Howard House. But allocation subcommittee does not believe that particular project should be funded due to the amount of funds allocated to one property. With the subtraction of the $100,000 for the Howard House, it reduces AHEP's request to $500,000. If Virginia Support of Housing does not meet all contingencies in place, the funding will be used to provide AHEP $500,000 minus the $42,000 that we're currently recommending in this proposal. It has recommended a NOFO be issued for the remaining funds if Virginia Support of Housing does not meet all of its contingencies in place. The city staff agrees with HAC on the recommendation, and recommendations are based on the following factors. If the city council allocates the funds as recommended by the HAC allocation subcommittee and the city staff, it will create 86 supported affordable units, with 80 of the units being new. Eighty of the units will also have supportive housing services attached to them. Twelve of the units, twelve of the 80 units developed by Virginia Support of Housing will be fully accessible. The Virginia Support of Housing project will end chronic homelessness in the city of Charlottesville. Staff recommend city council approve the attached resolutions. Thank you for your time. Brenda Kelly and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And colleagues, if I, I'm sorry. I could just offer some brief comments specifically regards to the crossings, too. As many of you know, we've been working on this project now for two and a half years, if I'm not mistaken. But the goal, as you alluded to, is to end chronic homelessness. And we know that there are some parameters that we still have to meet, but I can assure you that there's a dedicated team of sorts, which consists of several different partners from Virginia Support of Housing, members of city staff, members from the county, members from TJ PDC, the Thomas Jefferson Coalition for the Homeless, Regent, I mean, the Housing Authority, several different partners who've been working together for a very long time to try to bring this fruition. There is deep discussion going on currently with the Housing Authority in terms of how we can work out not only the voucher situation, but the site control. The site that we've been looking at is Levy Avenue. Currently, the redevelopment committee, as part of the CRHA, has provided the team of sorts who's been working on the crossings, too, with a list of five questions that we need to answer, five very in-depth questions. We're in the process now of answering those questions, and we're going to get them back to the redevelopment committee by the end of the week. But there's been extensive discussion in that regard, including other site visits to the original crossings, one, as well as going and looking at another housing structure that Virginia Support of Housing has done in Hopewell, Virginia. So rest assured, we're trying to cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is. And again, the whole goal for this project is to end chronic homelessness, which I think is something that we can do in addition to bringing more affordable housing here in the city.
Mayor Walker, I'd just like to respond to Councilwoman Bellamy. So thank you, because that's a really helpful clarification for me, because unfortunately, the only thing I've been able to find out about are some newspaper articles about the, kind of the discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
That didn't have any resolution. So the fact that the members of the redevelopment committee from the Housing Authority have sending you questions is very encouraging to me. So there really is clear dialogue, and you're responding to their concerns.
Very much so. And I just, in full transparency, part of the reason why we've had to, I guess, the initial core team of sorts, which is seven, eight folks, had to kind of move quietly in terms of trying to get all of the specifics and your parameters in place, in addition to trying to have the meetings with community members and whatnot. I think Ms. Carpenter is still, but in any event, we've been having meetings, inviting, you know, larger table meetings, but inviting members of the community and different partners. But we've had to be very methodical, because you don't want to count your eggs before they hatch. You don't want to say, hey, we're going to build this structure that's going to end chronic homelessness without you truly having all the voucher situations squared away. But now that we're moving in that direction, you hear more rumblings, and that's why we were prepared to bring forth a proposal to the HAC, that we're very confident that we'll meet all the recommendations, and we won't need to give that money to anybody else, because we're going to keep it in chronic homelessness. Right?
I like it.
All right.
Just a couple of comments from me. Those, the five questions that you all have, you said by the end of the week, you'll have them.
Yes, ma'am. We have roughly all of them answered, and my laptop died, but I was looking at it. We have roughly all of them done, but there's some fine tuning. But I mean, and I have no issues or no qualms with sending those responses also to my colleagues on council. We have a budget that we've already developed with potential outside partners in terms of funding. And again, this partner, Virginia Support of Housing, they're the real deal in terms of developing this kind of housing. So, you know, I think, in full transparency, I really, you know, I've been one of the catalysts. I'm not going, this isn't a West project. But I think that the group that we have is truly committed with a great deal of expertise from Dave Norris and some of the folks who worked on the initial crossings to bringing forth this new venture. I think it's going to be good for everybody.
And my second comment is just if this didn't work with the $750,000 allocation for the Crossings Two project, that the majority of those funds automatically would go to AHEP would be something that I would want, want us to discuss. The Habitat projects and the Booker Street projects are projects, wherever they are in the line, that I think warrant attention to, and that we should have a discussion about that, instead of saying if this didn't work, then the funding going directly.
And as I said, and on those discussions, because I'm on the allocation subcommittee, I think they did want to hear council's feedback on, because I raised the question, I said, well, what if this doesn't work out? Do we want to then bring it back to the allocation subcommittee, which we would do for any additional funds that may come up in December if through a surplus, that we would just kind of reopen things up? Some people just submit the exact same applications again and be through it, but then we would have another discussion point. So I guess it's important for council to give feedback on if this falls through, it is a pretty significant amount that would be then available again, do you want to open it up to the broader, broader group at that point?
I certainly do, because I do think what's wonderful to see on the table is the broad spectrum of need that we're meeting.
Right.
And I do want to pay attention to that. We don't, we can't short shrift any one component of the spectrum. And so I would very much like to see that come back again.
I would echo those statements, specifically after kind of the powerful testimonies that we heard from members of the public regarding Habitat and the work that they've been doing earlier. I think they definitely need to be in contention, in addition to, thank you, Mayor Walker, for bringing up the Booker Street project, which I think is also formidable, to say the least. So from my personal, just kind of my perspective, I think it would behoove us to open it up in the event. But again, I'm going to say that there's going to be no need, because we're going to do that.
And I want to be optimistic with you, but I will say that if, the other thing the group really felt strongly about is if there is really a red light.
No, I understand.
It's better to know sooner versus later, because these are all really important projects and initiatives that we want to be funding when, you know, with current dollars. We don't want to be finding ourselves six months later and then, oh.
Like what's going on? Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no.
So that would just be, we would ask for that, so that the allocation subcommittee can then, you know, reengage and follow its processes.
I think it's the appropriate thing to do, and I appreciate you all having the foresight to do so. But I'm again steadfast that we ain't going to need to do so.
And Mayor Walker, this is somewhat related, if I may say something. And it's been mentioned already tonight by matters of the public, that at the end of the last budget cycle, negotiations last March, we had made a commitment to make, I believe it was a one and a half million dollar commitment to the housing fund if there was an extra year-end surplus. And I personally would like to underscore that again.
I think it's in total, so right now we have half of that already accounted for.
Okay. So that would be the second half.
Seven fifty.
Another seven fifty.
Are you saying from the surplus that we're going to potentially have?
Yeah, that was how we had decided that every year we wind up having a year-end surplus that's several million.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, I mean, to say that we're going to go ahead and allocate that now, I don't know.
Oh, no, no, we're not. We're just reinforcing our interest.
We wanted to reserve it and put it into the CAF. And, and thank you for clarifying that, Vice Mayor Hill, that it would be seven fifty plus another seven fifty. If that's available, you need to put that back in. That's what we had committed to do, was a one and a half million dollars.
Right.
That's how I remember it. I may be misremembering.
No, that's accurate.
So basically, we're just saying that at the end of the year, we want to revisit for these other projects.
Correct.
Yes, but if there is money at the end of the year surplus, that, because we zeroed out the housing fund last year, that we wanted to make it whole again and put money back into the housing fund with that surplus.
Right.
That's how I remember it.
Yeah. But that would come before us, and we would have a discussion about where the allocation...
She's bringing up the record. Statement that I certainly endorse that, and I...
Well, I don't have any other.
Okay.
Would there be any objection, just Mr. Murphy, to clarifying kind of what, last March?
Yeah, because I don't have...
Yeah, right. I thought it might be.
So to be clear, good evening.
Good evening.
During the budget process, there were a number of priorities council might have liked to have budgeted for, but we have made some decisions about what revenues would be raised and what cuts would be made. And council articulated in a work session, and forward you the slide, what you might like to spend money on should there be a surplus. And I like to start there, and that's where this narrative gets started, because I mentioned this at the HAC. It starts with the assumption that there is a surplus. So we'll get there, right? And determine that when you have that meeting, which you do every year at the first December meeting. So if there's a surplus, then I would remind you that in addition to affordable housing, which I think was 755,000, you decided you might put the money back into Friendship Court that we had cut, which was 400,000, and that you might fund the, you know, liability to the retirement fund that wasn't fully funded, that we had amortized over 20 years. And all in all, you made decisions that would have spent almost $4 million of surplus, should there be one. So what I said at the HAC meeting is, first, there has to be a surplus, then council has to decide these are still the priorities. There's a brand-new city manager who may have other priorities to suggest to the council. And should it be less than that $4 million, they might need to make either a prioritization that says we're going to pay for this, all of it first, or we're going to, in some proportion, fund all the things we wanted to, but people are all going to get half of what we said. So just to be clear about what has been said about this, first, there has to be a surplus, and there was a lot of things on the list besides affordable housing.
I feel like you just added flowers to that list on that, on that PowerPoint. You just made it all pretty.
Diewoods.
Okay. So, okay.
What did you say?
Yeah, yes, then, and what?
So for this resolution tonight, where we are is to approve these allocations, these resolutions as written, so the 750 for the Virginia Support of Housing project, the 42,000, which is the balance for the AHEP programs. But the major request, the major shift from what it says, what council's asking for, is that if there were to be any change in one of those projects cannot, can no longer take those funds, that it would then go back to the allocation subcommittee for reconsideration of the funds in total and reallocating.
I'll second that.
Well, did I even make a motion? I'm just, I'm making, I'm just stating, that's what I'm hearing.
But to your point, Vice Mayor Hill, both resolutions are specific appropriations, one for supportive housing and one for AHEP.
Yeah.
And there's nothing within the resolutions that give the secondary if something doesn't work. So if you just want to pass these tonight as presented, if it doesn't work out...
And that's where I have one question. So hypothetically, say one of them doesn't work out, then what is the formal action that's taken to then free up the funds, to unallocate them?
Okay. What would then happen is the money's appropriated for a specific project, let's say Project X. Project X doesn't come to fruition. NDS would then make that determination that it hasn't come to fruition. Then, quite frankly, what would need to happen is the appropriation couldn't legally be made, because Project X isn't able to accept the funds. But what would then happen is the HAC's allocation subcommittee, this would go back to them, they'd make an additional recommendation to the council. It would come back, we would repeal the previous resolution and enact the new one.
So can I, from looking at the request summaries, it looks like that, what, we started talking about part one, or can I talk about both of them?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I'm just interested in the additional funding, the remaining funding of the $42,000, how was that determined? Because it looks like that if it's a per unit, that there could be at least one project funded, or a partial project funded with Habitat? Is that the, if they are 30, at 30,000 per?
Yeah, but the recommendation was for, for the next, that balance of funding to go to AHEP.
Yeah, so I'm just asking, what was the rationale behind that?
So the city received both, all the applications through email, and there was some discussion, because a couple of applications came in behind the 4:00 p.m. deadline. So after taking out the two applications that came out behind the deadline, it was left between Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust, AHEP, and Virginia Support of Housing. The Thomas Jefferson Land Trust, they asked for more than 30,000 per unit, so they were taken out, and the two applicants were Virginia Support of Housing and AHEP.
Okay.
So the remaining funds left over were proposed to AHEP.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so is there a motion for part one?
Yeah, I moved, after resolution, allocation of the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund for the Virginia Support of Housing Crossings Two project, the amount of $750,000.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to thank and credit Councilwoman Bellamy, you, and the hard work of all the other folks involved, and it's a really big deal.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's like it'll really make a difference.
We appreciate it. Let's get it done.
All right, please vote.
And I move we adopt the resolution of allocation of the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund for Alamoal Housing Improvement Program, Critical Rehab and Emergency Repairs Program, in the amount of $42,000.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, please vote. All right, that carries four to one. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great job, John.
Great job, man.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hill, for your work on the HAC.
All right.
Finish, finish.
Is there a, next we have a report, the food equity presentation.
Good evening.
Give a power, a power?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Misty Graves. I work at the Department of Human Services. I've had the pleasure of being the staff liaison to the Food Equity Initiative for this past year, and I'm really excited to have these two individuals present on the progress they've made towards the objectives they set a year ago, and also talk to you about some strategic planning that's already been taking place and some recommendations.
Thank you, Misty. Good evening. My name is Chantel Bingham. You guys know who I am, but just for the record, I run the Charlottesville Food Justice Network, which is a program of City School Yard Garden. And I'm here with Jeanette Abinater, who is Executive Director of City School Yard Garden, the Urban Agricultural Collective, as well as the Charlottesville Food Justice Network Program. I just wanted to take a moment to pause. This time last year, the Food Justice Network had done... the Urban Agricultural Collective, as well as the Charlottesville Food Justice Network Program. I just wanted to take a moment to pause. This time last year, the Food Justice Network had done a lot of work already for, for the City of Charlottesville. And one of our key members, Lisa Reader, had passed away the day before we did the Food Equity Initiative. And she was a, a key engine to a lot of the work that has been done. And we still kept moving along. So I just wanted to, to take a, a moment to pause for her and. One other woman who has been really instrumental in Charlottesville, Holly Edwards, who I had the opportunity and gratitude to work with, also passed away two years ago. I have my masters in public health. A lot of the work that I do is always going to be around health equity in Charlottesville. And I also just wanted to take a couple of moments for her as well. We're going to talk a lot about equity. We're going to talk a lot about health this evening and the things that the city is doing. Holly Edwards was a vice mayor before and has done a lot to be a bridge builder. And I try every day to live in her light and build bridges and, and really push the button with health equity in Charlottesville. So I would also like to take a moment to pause and recognize her as well. Okay, thank you. So now that we've filled some of the space with gratitude, I just wanted to thank the city council for passing the Food Equity Initiative. Like we said, this was a long process and it's, we've been in the movement for a couple of years now. Here are some of the high arching things that we were able to achieve over the past year that I think are the most important. Number one is really cultivating a new model for community, city engagement that prioritizes community voice and decision-making. All the photographs are on the, the front page of the Food Equity Initiative. Those are people that really engaged throughout this year. That's not something that we just put together for fun. And, and those are real people that were engaged. The only one that's there is Lisa Reader's picture, who, like I said, was not present. One of the second things that we did is continue to cultivate trusting relationships between the city departments and nonprofits to tackle systemic issues of racial equity in the food system. This is something that really has not been present before. A lot of the network organizations who are nonprofits, we've been trying to work and cultivate relationships with city departments for a really long time. But really, it was the launch of the city's council's Food Equity Initiative, which really gave us momentum to, to start those partnerships in a real authentic way. We've also been able to directly increase alignment between city staff and community needs as it relates to health and food equity under a food equity lens. City department leadership, thank you, Misty, for being our liaison. And there's also been a lot of other folks in the room, as well as Chris Jensen, Alex Ikufana, and Jason Ness from Office of Economic Development Services, that are really working to increase awareness of the role that their sector plays in cultivating food security. I named those four, but there's a lot more. As you have seen in the report, we engage with about ten city departments. I will say that two of them are missing. So City Market, we did have an interview with them. They do have a food equity profile. It did not make it in, I'm sorry. And also, Human Resources also has a food equity profile. It did not make it in. And I apologize for those two. I did the best I can to put the other ten in. So there's two profiles that are missing. That would round that out to twelve, and we'll get that to you guys as well. And then the last one, of course, is elevating cross-sector understanding of community planning around affordable housing, climate change and food security as an integral to building self-sufficient citizens of all ages. Below, you have our collaborating partners by the numbers. Those are the people that were most engaged through the Food Justice Network, the Local Food Local Places, Map to Health. Those are the three key ones. And then we did a lot of planning around citywide Food Equity Initiative. This is a quick slide on what brought us together. You can see the graph on the side is that percentage of the population that's food insecure, sixteen point seven percent from the mouth to health report. And we are very much behind with our Healthy People Twenty Twenty goal of six percent, specifically in Charlottesville. And then to the side is, is that city council directed, that really initiated the thinking around the Food Equity Initiative specifically. So a couple of years ago, city council directed Thomas Jefferson Health District to do a lot of research, and that was through Counselor Galvin, as well as many others, around healthy corner stores initiatives. Some quick stats around health disparities. These children are from West Haven. I took that photo a couple of years ago. So that is not from the Health Equity Initiative. That's from West Haven Community Day of twenty sixteen. But nearly thirty-seven percent of Charlottesville third and fifth graders are classified as overweight. This is around fifty percent for African-American youth. Things that we know, people that come from low-wealth communities disproportionately suffer higher rates of diet-related illnesses. And then in our schools, of course, we have a very, very high student population that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Across the whole school district is fifty-five percent. But you have nuggets of neighborhoods such as Centon Page, where a lot of those kids, it could be as, as high as eighty-two percent that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch. I said Charlottesville Food Justice Network. We're an emerging collaborative. It's about thirty-five organizations now. These are the first twenty-one that gathered in twenty fifteen to really start the building food equity and what does that lens really look like. We really sought to spark dialogue and host community events and engage around action. For those of you who don't know what food equity is, it's a system in which all residents have equal opportunity to acquire good food that meets our nutritional and cultural needs. One thing that's left out of this, it's a synonym. You could also call it food apartheid. But it's a specific approach of saying, hey, there is something wrong in our community where health disparities and health inequities are not random. African-Americans, people of color are disproportionately suffering more. And so we need to start taking a systemic approach to looking at how our city is, is developing and how our city is building gaps in access to healthy nutritious food. So this is a little bit different from, I'm not, I'm not a nutritionist. Holly Edwards was a nurse. I am not a nurse. I am more, come from the masters in public health in built environment space. So it's more about planning cities and saying that there's, there's one thing that you have, people's individual choices, but then there's also that environment that they're stuck in that may be rampant of A B C stores or fast food restaurants, those types of things. This is the Charlottesville Food Justice Network's equity framework that got developed over the course of three years. Not going to spend too much time on it. It is in the report and it is a foundation and under which every city department had an orientation to it. And we really dug into the practices, the core values and the vision that drives our racial equity lens as we look at food access. And so some of those core practices that I'll just call out quickly is utilizing an equity approach to understanding and confronting historical and current roles that race, class, and privilege play in our local food system. We also wanted to acknowledge systemic barriers, create stronger partnerships and relationships with community members facing food injustice, and embrace the intersection of community food goals with housing, transportation, economic development, public health, politics, because it's a thing, school, agriculture, and culture. So this is that, that zoom-out shot of the five strategies that the network organizations really honed in on. That is transportation, affordable housing, urban agriculture, neighborhood food access, and healthy school foods. So we're really looking at the ways in which food access is playing at the intersection of all of those. It's not something that's directly straightforward. It's really systemic. It's, it's food systems planning. It's something that has been missing for a very long time. None of the city comprehensive plans mention food, which is part of, part of the reason why we haven't been able to tackle this problem in a holistic way. None of them are really looking at the development or the under-development of food access in neighborhoods. And so these strategies are a way that you can increase transportation or access to grocery stores that are now starting to crop up around our urban ring. They're not really in people's neighborhoods anymore. Affordable housing, that was a huge topic for tonight. So I don't feel like I need to reiterate how strong that, how important that is. But rent is a huge burden on people's food budget. So you're either choosing to keep, keep the lights on, pay rent, or put food on the table for some people. So those are the strategies. Here are some of the network partners. Investing in community engagement. Oh, okay, Tammy left. So this is that part where we try to sneak in some folks that weren't really on the agenda to speak. But I'll take it really quickly. Here's our timeline for engagement. With the Food Equity Initiative, we really took that first three months or so to buckle down on research and grant writing. We don't think the city can do this work alone, so grants are very helpful. One grant that we were, we're able to win about three grants over this course. And one of the major ones that was directly involved with crafting the strategies was the Local Food Local Places workshops, the EPA. That, that award for technical assistance did not come with any money. It came with a lot of coordination that needed to go with it. And we had to fundraise for it, but it was important enough for us to do that. So we did, we did that for the city and for the Food Equity Initiative. In March, you can see that's when we started to ramp up our engagement with city departments, really meeting with each and every one of them. There were ten partners that signed on to Local Food Local Places. So part of that ramped up engagement was prompted because we actually found out that we won that award in January. So we were able to engage a little bit more. You can see the timeline of up until August. So not going to spend too much time on it. I think the most important part is to see all these different levels of community engagement, be it with city departments, nonprofit leaders, as well as the youth and resident leadership that's a part of the Food Equity Initiative and engaging really every level of our community. Here's a little bit more about the engagement process that's also in the report, just highlighting that there are a core group of nonprofit leaders that meet. There are residents that are meeting from the IRC community, resettled refugee community, as well as communities of color. Ms. Rosa Keys in the audience, I hope she's still sitting behind me. I'm making her proud. She's smiling. Thank you, Rosa. We have one-on-one interviews with all the department heads in the city. Of Amal's here, okay, good. And then bi-monthly food equity convenings. This is just a snap panel. This isn't all of our folks. I'm not going to keep this up for too long. But, but these are some of the kids and residents that were engaged in the Food Equity Initiative. A little overview of Local Food Local Places that happened at July sixteenth through seventeenth. This was that award for National Technical Assistance. We did this so well for the EPA that they invited us to present at the Community Food Systems Conference in December. So we're going to be that model city. That was awesome. So Local Food Local Places was broken into two days. This first day is just a snapshot of the community tours. That picture to the left is our whole group after the day. Most of the people stuck around. We have fifty-four participants representing twenty-eight organizations engaged in a day-long community tour. Four D M R foundations, six representing state and federal partners, five city departments. That was Neighborhood Development Services, Parks and Rec, Human Services, Charlottesville City Schools, which I know is not technically a city department, but y'all all in the same party, so I throw you up there. And then City Market. And then we also, like I said, we align with different sectors. So housing and redevelopment is a core focus. So it was great to also have Riverbend Development Corporation, Piedmont Housing Alliance, Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority, and the Public Housing Association of Residents, FAR, really be along with that process and lend their voice and ear and engagement. And then those ten nonprofit community organizations. Just some pictures of the day. These are all in the report. But I was engaging on community tour. And then the workshop, this got eighty-three participants, which was way off the chart. This, the Local Food Local Places workshop is, is designed for twenty-five to fifty people. This is why they liked us, because we had a lot of engagement. And I think that is just representative of how much that people care about food in our community in every neighborhood. It's not, it's not really focused on one neighborhood at all. And so those are some views from the workshop. All right, and this is where I turn it over. I have the lead to Jeanette.
So we wanted to talk a little bit about moving forward, what we see next. This is our report, but we wanted to highlight a few of the goals that we have moving forward. So this is a quick overview of some of our next steps. We did a pilot with the Community Advocates Program that Tamara Wright is the lead of, and we want to launch a full program. We found that that was a very successful way to engage grassroots community members in leading the initiative. To continue to catalyze ongoing organizational partners for greater efficiency and impact, we found that as nonprofits engaged in this collaborative process, it strengthened our work. It helped us to amplify a racial equity lens to our work through conversations and training and analysis. We want to finalize the issue chapters with specific work plans. So the five core issue areas, each issue area had a core group of what Chantel called "chapter champions", who were working on a detailed work plan for that chapter. So urban farming, healthy school foods, housing, transportation, those five areas, and food access. We have a few of them done and we want to finalize those with the specific work plans. Want to continue to work with the city departments to implement the action plans. In your very comprehensive report that we turned in, page twenty-nine, starts the city department work plans. These are kind of one-page overviews of what each city department saw as the intersection of their work with food equity. We feel that that's a really important initiative to move forward and that the city departments can only do that with the support of the community and grassroots organizations. In addition, the Local Food Local Places produced a very robust action plan. Many of those are very similar and they, they build on each other and reflect each other. We would like to continue to work with the city comprehensive planning process to include food equity. When the process was live last year, Chantel and others with the network were very involved in that and had suggested some specific language. And then, of course, continue to raise funds for project implementation. Given some of the questions that Counselor Galvin had this morning, I just thought I would take a minute to overview the funding. This is a, in your packet, it just shows a brief overview of the last, or this pilot year or first year. On the left column, you'll see the overall expenses for the Food Equity Initiative. And on the right column, what the sixty-five thousand dollar funds that were awarded through city council were spent on. So much of that was spent on facilitation for Chantel's time to lead the network, also to launch the Community Advocate Program, which is in conjunction with the Youth Food Justice Interns, many, a few of whom were here earlier but had to head home. Also to help support the community meetings, which included some of the Local Food Local Places, as well as ongoing other meetings and just other miscellaneous supplies. We were able to match the city's funding, more than match the city's funding, with the following nonprofit donors for fiscal year nineteen.
Were those matches required? Like, so was the city funding required?
No, no.
I'm saying, I'm sorry. Did you, did having city funding help get those matches?
Yes, they did.
Were those funds requiring that you have a local match?
None of the particular funds there required a match. But it was a mutual, I think when we came to you last fall, we had maybe some of these already secured and we used that as an opportunity to ask you for funds as well as vice versa. Moving forward, over on the right side, you'll see the projected budget for fiscal year twenty. We do have a grant, two grants for the fiscal year twenty that are, that require matching. Both are federal grants. Both are federal grants. One is a USDA Community Food Projects Grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each year for three years, and one is a thirty thousand dollar EPA Environmental Justice Grant.
And they can be matched by any funding source? But they need to match?
Non-federal, any non-federal funding source, yes. And that was it. Yeah. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to say, I think that it's pretty amazing what you've done in a year. And you've managed to work with so many internal departments of the city bureaucracy. You've gotten so many different groups in the community working together. And it's almost like an incredible model just for comprehensive planning, period, that is truly, truly community-oriented. So, thank you so much for giving us that model and for your commitment and passion, and also the hard-nosed, practical skills that you bring to this whole discussions. I mean, you gave us a budget. You gave us your hope for matching grants. You've been applying for grants. I mean, this is not, you're using left and right brain constantly, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a great report, and I think I would have less complaints about nonprofits and our funding for them if we received reports like this. And not only the reports, I think what I have seen and heard throughout the community is that you're able to do this work and not, and the engagement piece, people feel welcomed. They feel listened to. They feel heard. They don't feel judged in any way. And food is a very hard conversation to have in, you know, the communities that you're having them in, right? And so, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that, you know, the way people feel as a result of this. But I think every nonprofit should look at this as a model, not only for what you're going to do in December, but in terms of how to, you know, present information and give us the entire picture. And then let us know what, you know, moving forward looks like and the attempts to ensure that there are funding streams outside of the city. So, I really appreciate it, the work.
Thank you. It was not easy. It may look like it was easy, but it really wasn't at all. But I will say, the people like Rosa Key, Bamaal, Joy Johnson, Audrey Oliver, I have the pleasure to see a lot of different sides of community members. I don't only interact with them in one way. I don't only have to see one side of someone because I'm in that space a lot and in different spaces. So, being able to build those relationships, there's no science to that. That's not anything we could really write in a report. I think that that was something that came, came from a very long time of relationship building. So, I know that this is definitely a model, and I just don't, I don't want to maybe flavor it to say that anyone can do this, because it is, it is very difficult, and it does take, it does take a while. But I do think this is what we all should be looking for. And food is one of those things that when you're able to share a meal with someone, regardless of what you're eating, you're sharing a meal. You're filling your stomach up. That, it's just, it's humanity. It's not, we have a lot of tough conversations across the dinner table growing up for me. And so, that's just part of my culture. And that's something that I brought to the table when I do engage with community members. So, I'm just honored to be able to have that perspective, but then also to be a part of a lot of nonprofits. And we have been stretching ourselves for a very long time.
Yeah.
Very long time. I mean, we started conversations around race prior to 2017. And that was the year that, I mean, it was a week before the rallies that we had held our roundtable on race and food in Charlottesville. And so, I can't, you know, knock the fact that there's about thirty nonprofit organizations that have been working for two years between 2015 and 2017 to start really digging into race. And that really laid a foundation for us to have better conversations being in the same space. It wasn't, it did not happen over this eight-month period. It was like, started a long time ago. But this was definitely a good moment in time for us to build a community or a relationship with the city and build off that.
Yeah, and I would just say, as someone who had concerns, because you all know I had a lot of concerns and questions and just being skeptical about the funding use and what had happened in the past. So, I'm acknowledging that now and acknowledging that over the course of the year of watching it, that has shifted. But I will say, what you didn't say is that most people can't do the work that you all are doing. And that's, I mean, they just need someone else to be able to assist them to do it. And I think that this is, you know, just a time to highlight that.
Yeah.
Because this is how it's done.
Yeah.
And looking at those intersections, especially when you read like the map reports and look at the health disparities in the area and knowing how critical food is. And also, not just food, but the conversations that you can have when you build trust around the other areas that are critical, that is, that are so important. And that's how change started happening, because you're able to take what looks like just a conversation about food justice and talk about justice and imagining it throughout the city. And that's, and how you lead to that and how you get people comfortable talking about that.
And I will say, I don't think we were able to make a really compelling case last time either, because it is such a systems approach. It's hard to talk about. And so, we've been learning about how to talk about it. And it's also very much shaped our organization. So, as you all know, City School Year Garden is focused on that, just gardens in the schools and doing that work. Over the course of the past two years, we launched the Charlottesville Food Justice Network, which works at a system and policy level. And then we also became the backbone organization for the Urban Agricultural Collective of Charlottesville. So, that, doing that, working at the personal, at the community, and at the policy level, the systems level, is the way that we're applying these values and practices to the way our organization looks as well, so.
And Mayor Walker, too, if I, and colleagues, I understand that you've got two grants. They're three years. They require matches.
The one is three years.
One is three years. That's the USDA one.
Yeah.
And that's the one where you need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, it's a hundred percent match.
For three years. And you need, you need that match for the remainder of FY twenty, which has got nine more months left in it. So, I'm just getting the temperature of my colleagues here. I would seriously like the council to consider providing a matching grant for the federal program that they already have the grant money for for fiscal year twenty. And that is within, I believe, our council discretionary funding levels. But I think that this is, and then that means in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, you get in the pipeline, you know, for the budget cycle discussions like we typically do. But right now, I do see that that's what discretionary funds are best used for, is when there is a grant-funded position, when there is grant, when there's grant money to be gotten and you have to seize it. And you have proven the concept. You have proof of concept in front of us, that you've done so much work, as you say, at the personal, the community, and the policy level. So, I don't want to lose this momentum. It's something to consider, but I think you do need revenue right now.
I would be in agreeance with that. I think this would be an absolutely perfect opportunity for us to use our discretionary funds for a matching grant. So, I think, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, whatever you want to do with your funds, but I'm just saying, remember, you've got other items that you're trying to fund too within your discretionary funds for this fiscal year. And the amounts, you know, it's getting larger and larger. So, what are you going to do once you go over that? So, you know, you have to think about that.
So, what else are we?
I don't know what else.
Is it something all the time, right?
All I can say is that this is something that was started a year ago with basically like a pilot money. They have really worked hard demonstrating how this should work, can work. They've gotten the federal government to believe it. That's another layer of monitoring to make sure that you're crossing Ts and dotting Is. I just feel that this is a really good investment. We know what's going to happen with it.
They've proven such.
Yes.
I know there's competing factors. I just think that this is one that, in my personal estimation, is more than worthy. And they've shown their worthiness with the thoroughness of their report. And the proof is in the pudding, the good pudding, that is. You like that, huh?
I think I might, what was the reason why you didn't go for nonprofit, the nonprofit funding cycle this time around?
I don't, you mean the ABRT?
Well, we have a different, yeah.
So, we are going for that. The particular funding that we're working on with city council is at the upper level. It's not at a program level necessarily. So, each of our partner organizations will still be raising funds to do the program work that they're doing that build into the Food Equity Initiative. This is to support the systems work that does those, the partnership with the city departments, the work planning, the city comprehensive plan language. It's different work, so.
Yeah, I'm just asking, because we're doing our best to try to streamline requests into things that are all being assessed with the same type of criterion, because especially off-budget cycle has been a very prevalent thing happening in the last several months especially. So, I was just trying to get a sense for how this would look in the future, because this is, you're presenting something that's beyond one year.
And as I, as I suggested, that that would get back into a regular budget cycle for FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, but they specifically needed the matching in FY twenty. I don't understand it.
You'll need it all three years.
Yes. You'll need all three years, but like, this kind of the acute need right now to...
I would agree with such. And I think, I mean, even for the sake of argument tonight, because I think Councilor Galvin made, I want to belabor the point since they just had a report and we have another one afterwards. But there's two councilors who are in agreeance. So, we can have this on the agenda.
Have it on the agenda and have a resolution ready so that we can reach agreement. And that's kind of where I was heading at, so.
And I support it.
No, no, yeah, this is...
And then we can talk about it in light of the concerns of Dr. Richard.
This is definitely for a future agenda, but wanted to give staff direction about the resolution.
Okay. And I would like staff to weigh in as well.
Okay.
So, we want to bring that back next.
Well, in November?
When do you all need an answer about the matching funds?
Before this, the end of this calendar year.
So, November's okay?
Yes.
November's okay, so, and it'd be an appropriation. So, need two readings, since it would be over a thousand dollars.
Maybe the first and second meeting in November?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
A joke, a joke, a joke.
Their jokes have been horrible.
They all laughed. What do you mean? I just gave her a heart attack with my joke.
All right, next we have, oh, are we at the end?
Yes, we're at the end.
Report estimates for staff costs for the Equity and Inclusion Department. I agree.
We'll give this situation a second to settle. What was that sign?
So much excitement.
Hey, Mike? I think the room is ready, so, councilors, we're here to talk about equity once again. You'll recall that once upon a time, when I sat up there with you, I said this would be a priority. And we convened a group of staff and community members. We made presentation to you in both May and August with those recommendations. And when we were here six weeks ago, you asked to come back with a report about what it would cost to implement the recommendations. You know, you have the report before you. I want to hit on a couple of highlights. You know, the dollar amount that's in there is what might be imagined with one plan about realizing the recommendations during the year that we're in. I want to be clear that if you make a commitment to staff positions, you'd be talking about ongoing costs. That'd be an important discussion for the FY twenty-one budget cycle. And that I believe that those costs are just over half a million dollars to staff the office in the way annually that the committee had recommended to you all and we have discussed in our past two presentations. I think that it is extraordinarily important that should there be an office or individuals working on the equity issue, they need to be resourced appropriately. They need to have a position within the organization that has influence and access to the top leadership. They need to be educated about the conditions in our organization. And they need to be working toward defined metrics, you know, and be data-driven. And so, the proposal that you see before you and the costs included, imagine that if we were moving as quickly as possible, it's, I believe that we could have the director-level person here this year by the beginning of the new calendar year. And that we would be able to onboard one of the other two staff positions for only a quarter. So, you have some partial annualized costs in there. On top of that, obviously, you, when you have staff positions, you have operational costs. And the most important part of all of this are the training components that need to get rolled out to the entire organization. Those costs are all modified depending on timing and how quickly, if you wanted to move forward, that you would want to move forward. And so, I know that we have some questions about what monies are available, and should we wait for the new Human Resources Director to be here for that recruitment? And that obviously makes some modification to the timeline. I've asked Mr. Davidson to come, you know, from his home and sit with us in my office all evening, just so that you would understand in detail some of the questions that Ms. Galvin had about, hey, we've got a couple different types of funds that are blended and braided together in the council funds. And I think it's important that you understand what they are and how much is left within them. I know it came up during the last item as well. So, let me have Ryan do that, and then we'll return to the equity topic.
Sure. So, one of the questions that, thank you all for having me. One of the questions that Ms. Galvin had asked centered around, is the equity, or is the strategic initiatives different from the full discretionary funds and what's included in those pots? Just to note, those are the same things. The strategic initiatives are the council discretionary funds that you guys use for off-cycle requests or any initiatives that come before you that are not in the annual budget process that you guys want to provide funding for. Also, current balance, there was a question about the current balance of, there's four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars available to be spent. Of that, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars has not been spoken for whatsoever. The two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars was set aside for equity items. Some of those had been previously dedicated, such as the scholarship program, the ethnic study course. However, none of these, and also, there was an allocation for the Blue Ribbon Commission on Race Memorials and Public Spaces. And that, those items are available to be reprogrammed. And we have done so with the Blue Ribbon Commission dollars because of various items. We've reallocated that to the Civil Rights Pilgrimage, the Business Equity Fund... We've reallocated that to the Civil Rights Pilgrimage, the Business Equity Fund. The recent, the most recent one was the City Schools Gifted Teachers that came before you. Those were all items that were, that were, came out of that. So that is still at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And it's still within what was the original equity funds. And we wanted to separate those out because you got, because council had said they wanted those to sit in and, and to be available for equity items. So that is why we have those two different amounts. Technically, it is four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars because you can reprogram any of these amounts because they have not been spent yet. Then you've said you want to spend it on the, the equity package items. But none of those dollars, none of those programs have come fully before or, or been spent. So those are, would be available to, to be reallocated. And one of the items is roughly just shy of sixty thousand dollars. That is unallocated equity items to be spent on anything in an equity-related fashion, so.
But the fifteen thousand, there's fifteen thousand dollars from the ethnic studies course that, that's about to go out.
That's about, that is, that is one item that, when we set this out, a couple of days later, we got a, a, a request for those funds. So that is about to be, to come out of those items. So that would, would be the one item that has been.
I feel like I'm missing that. So one fifty-nine is just not allocated to anything at all.
Nothing at all.
Two hundred and eighty-four had been, but it's really available to be reprogrammed. And then is another number I'm missing after that?
No.
Forty-something, okay.
That, that was it, that was it.
Forty-four was within that, okay.
Yeah.
But when we're talking about these numbers.
Forty-four in total?
Four hundred and forty-four thousand.
Right, I have that number, yeah.
Okay.
I thought I heard other smaller numbers. But for example, like, we just had this last conversation here. We talked about one hundred and ninety-seven, I can't remember who's in track.
This is one hundred and ninety-seven, that one was one twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
One fifty-five, one fifty-five.
One twenty-five.
For the Food Equity Initiative.
Food Equity, one twenty-five.
It's, is it one fifty-five?
Yeah, one fifty-five.
That's what I'm saying.
So matching with thirty thousand for EPA and then one twenty-five with USDA.
Okay, because I'm like, I know I wrote down right here one twenty-five, okay.
Got you.
So that's, I'm saying, those are dollars that have to come from this four forty-four.
Discretionary fund.
Right. And then we're asked, we're talking about, I'm just trying to make sure I'm adding up numbers and don't exceed something we don't have. We aren't exceeding things we have, okay. Just one fifty-five and then this number, one ninety-seven.
One ninety-seven.
Yeah. So wherever the funds are coming from, right? Because for this position, in terms of especially getting the director onboard so that we can start this department and figure out what equity looks like in the city, this is the only thing that in terms of, you know, work plan that Council Bellamy and I had on, on it. Making sure that this recruitment for the director position starts and is hired by, hopefully, the end of the year, you know, to, to get things rolling. And I would like to also say, you know, the, where, you know, we were leading here. The county has already hired and made that commitment. U V A has made the commitment. They are open and the department have asked me to come and be, do opening remarks for their meeting, for that. And it's important for us to make sure that we are, you know, participating in this local, you know, effort to see what we need to do regionally. But also, more importantly for me, is that we have a lot of work to do internally within the city government itself and externally within our community. And that will take a dedicated person to do, to do that work.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I, I just, like, let's not get it twisted. They, they follow, a lot, a lot of these other institutions are following our lead because they were not talking about equity in any shape, form, or fashion in the magnitude.
But you stopped following at some point when you've already done it and made the commitment.
But we still, we still started, like, we wrote the equity package. Like, we put nearly four million dollars into these initiatives.
I don't think this is the point to get defensive about it. I think that I'm just saying.
I just want to make sure, like, we give ourselves the proper, like, not kudos, but, like, these other institutions, they've, they've created offices of equity and whatnot. But we've been putting resources and money behind our actions, like, not just talking about it, not thinking about developing policies. We've been doing it.
So I'm just talking about that person, right? Hiring that person whose job it would be to do this work and to make sure that we are staying on task as a city.
Yeah, that's good.
And that we are leading, that we are moving in the right direction and making that commitment instead of saying it's, something is happening over here, something's happening over there, something. To be more strategic about it and also participate in the regional discussions surrounding it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anytime I got some more.
My goal is to get our H R director in, which is slated to start on October twenty-first. From that, that'll provide us with an opportunity to go out for a person to actually lead this department. That person will be able to identify clearly about what is needed within that given department as well as staffing for this current fiscal year. And then move into twenty twenty-one to be able to better budget in terms of personnel and other associated costs that may be a result of that department being formed.
And I have a, that's great, because you're saying in two weeks, this person will start doing this work. I do want to talk about that this is different work than most people do or have done, even if they have done something, something similar. So we're going to have to be really intentional about who we believe is capable. And I was just talking about this. We give a lot of money out annually, but there are very few nonprofits in the areas or other individuals who ask us for money who can deliver the type of report and not just deliver it, but follow through on the work they're doing and have the community engagement and buy-in that the report we just received had, had. And so it's important for us to understand that people have been working in a space, but not everybody can do this because it hasn't been done, really. And so you're looking for someone who will be unapologetic about this type of work. And that makes a lot of people nervous. So I just want to make sure that in terms of when this job description is written and when the panels are done to hire this person, that we are taking into consideration the disturbing data that we received from, even from the equity during your commission time, the group that you put together. And to know that we would then be charging those same people with the task of hiring or being able to open up their mind and imagine a world that's completely different from the world we totally live, currently live in and that they would be able to hire this person.
If I, I just want to get some clarification in the, in the process then. So, so Dr. Richardson, you're, you're getting an H R director at the end of October.
Twenty-first.
And, and then that person will be tasked with hiring this Director of Equity Inclusion Office?
What I wanted was a person with the necessary expertise in terms of understanding or had that experience of actually hiring or working, you know, with someone that had that capacity. But through that process and being able to review the applications, put out the right type of job description for that person. That's what this person would be for. You know, we, we, we just don't, I mean.
So it's, it's not like there's anything, it's not even mutually exclusive here. This, this is a different way of getting the same thing.
Yeah, because we don't have a H R director at this point.
Right.
What I want is somebody that we hired, that has those skill sets, to be able to help us in that process as well as work with the folks who are already in the profession to be able to put out a job description that will, that will possibly or hopefully get us a person with those qualifications that we're looking for to be able to do those things that the mayor just was talking about.
And kind of a process question, I was, I was thinking that we, and, and Mr. Blair, you might be able to help. We, we've never had a resolution that actually instituted the department, have we? I mean, do we need that? I would think a new department needs to be somehow memorialized in some formal way. Just, doesn't have to go into the specifics, but says, we, we council are hereby instituting a Office of Inclusion and Equity for these reasons. And then that, then that gives direction to staff about creating the budget that, because these are full-time employees. It's, that's the thing that's a little bit of a rub for me, is that this is discretionary money from the council's discretionary fund being used to fund full-time employees. And we never, we always want to make sure there's a steady funding stream for that. Not, not something that we know is going to dry up.
I, I agree.
I mean, I just, that, that's my only concern with the way this is being proposed to be funded.
Well, I would certainly never suggest that council should appropriate dollars for a position that they don't intend to continue with. I do think that council has a track record of using money as launch funds and then having annual budgets start, you know, to absorb that going forward. What I think I've heard the city manager say, and perhaps the mayor agree with, is that while the proposal has a couple of positions in it, that we would only create the appropriate recruitment materials for the Director of this position, whether it's an office yet or not. But recruit the position for a Director of Equity and Inclusion. And to do so with monies within this year. I think I heard maybe in there, let's, let's wait and get that person onboard, give them some time to settle. We'll go through the twenty-one budget process and figure out whether there's another staff person or another two staff people like the committee imagined. I would say, you know, some amount of the money for the organization for training may still be important for appropriation.
And that I could see with discretionary funds, for sure.
But, you know, the training, I will say, that's not a one-time deal either, right? We're in a long-term commitment to work with staff if this is something that council's going to tackle. So I would say we could certainly modify the amount, talk about that tonight, bring it back to you at a different night, if that's your pleasure. And have that just be about, you know, maybe a slightly modified timeline since we know we're not onboarding the H R director. That person has a, a work plan in front of them where this won't be the only thing. And so, you know, I don't imagine that we're going to turn this around in just a week. But that said, I do think that because of the good work of the committee and the research that we've done about these offices in local governments around the country, that we can give the new H R director plenty of material to consider as we do that recruitment.
And I would like even to make the recommendation that the H R director engages with the committee throughout this process of getting this person onboard that you put together.
We, we've already had that discussion.
Okay. It's important.
But it is, do we need any other, do we need an enabling and resolution of some kind to institute a new department?
Well, a, a couple of things about this. Departments, and, and I will read to you from the city code. In section two dash one fifty, it says the city manager may, in order to promote the efficient operation of the fairs of the city under his management and control within the funds appropriated, therefore, create new departments and consolidate or abolish existing departments. So departments, the creation or abolishment is the, in the purview of the city manager. Now, concerning, you know, something like the Human Rights Commission, there was an Office of the Human Rights Commission that the council created by ordinance. It very well may be that you could look at having an ordinance to create the Office of Equity and Inclusion. Now, obviously, a department's a different story. That's purely the purview of Dr. Richardson, if you want to have a department. But I think an office, under the direction of the city manager, that can be a product of an ordinance passed by the city council.
So the civilian review board would be an ordinance?
Yes, if there, there's professional staff, there will probably be an ordinance, yes.
And I, I imagine this was a department of the city and it would be one that would be working in an integrative fashion with all the other departments of the city. Now, I might be wrong in how I interpreted it, but that's how I thought this was envisioned.
That's absolutely the case, yeah. It can, it can only work if it has the, you know, buy-in at the highest level of this is part of your strategic plan and it works throughout the system.
Okay.
And it goes above and beyond just the departments also. We're looking at contracts, we're looking at possibly how services are delivered in communities. So this would be a big position. And we need someone with those skill sets to be able to do that and provide the necessary data that we're trying to draw from everything that we're looking at in terms of equity.
It just, it just seems to me like we would, we wouldn't need to be overly prescriptive or technical that we would resolve to direct the city manager to implement these things in his judgment with the values of the organization. I mean, it's, that, you know, it seems, it doesn't seem like we need to.
We don't need to be.
Be tinkering in creating departments. It's a resolution to him, you know, as in your judgment to.
I think it's, for tonight, no significance whether this is a, a person, a department, an office. You know, that's, that's all nuanced at this juncture, you know, it's a structural question. You know, I think that you heard from the committee about, you know, what are the dynamics within the organization today? You know, what was our kind of pulse check with the departments about the work they are or not doing? How are we paying people and how does that break down on race and gender lines? You know, what we could be doing to work with people in G A R and otherwise? You know, there was a, a work plan set before you. They imagined that that was a group that reported to the city manager's office of three people with a director. You know, the city manager may decide that that's one person, two people, three people, and it's not a department, it's an office. That, that, you know, the, the idea is though, are you going to resource it, you know? And do they work at a high enough level that they have the influence to make changes?
But I think we also need to be realistic that one person, this would be very challenging for them to do alone.
Yeah, I don't say that in the way of advocacy for one person. What I thought I heard in the discussion is if there's going to be an action by the council at this meeting or a future meeting, it would be for moving forward with the recruitment of the director and that the other position or positions would be determined in the F Y twenty-one budget.
Yes, that, that is what I heard myself saying.
And I think it's important to start, and you always have to start with the person who's going to be at the head, but just with the understanding that the other positions are probably critical, I'm sure. And I'm, if a director doesn't feel like that, then, you know, I guess we would hear that, right?
That's right, you're correct.
Okay.
But I, I would also like to, to add that it would, I've been getting questions from the community because they're, they're, they're asking questions like, how is this different from the Human Rights Commission? How is this different from the civilian review board? So there's like, questions are coming in the community, we're going to have to sort these things out. What, what is all this meaning? Because it, it, it is new staff.
That's right.
And so that, I'm just asking that that be, be something that, that we clarify moving forward. And if there are any synergies between shared staff and, and any of these areas as support staff, not the director. The director's got to be laser-focused on this. But in at least initially, I think I, I for one would like to see some ability to see cross-training and, and, and using some of our existing staff as best as we can to, to provide the support. Because I, you know, we are at nine hundred and ninety-three point six four full-time employees at this point in time.
And there is disparities within race there and we have some major issues. And there is disparities within race there and we have some major issues in terms of their understanding of what equity for a lot of them looks like. So, that's back to, while, while we have people in place, that does not necessarily mean that they can do this particular.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, so it sounds like we got in our direction.
Yeah, okay.
All good?
Any other question?
We're not voting on something tonight.
No, we're not. It's just a report.
No, we were just giving a direction.
Yeah.
Yep. Good. Awesome. So, is that a resolution on a future open council agenda or is that a consent agenda item that captures the budget that you have endorsed in concept?
It's the latter, in my opinion, because we just had the discussion.
I just want to understand how to prepare.
One position as a director is, is not going to be the same budget that we've been looking at.
No, ma'am.
It sounded to me like the city manager's going to take the research and all this and discussion with the new HR manager and come back to us with a proposal that addresses that proposal and then we can vote on that proposal. We don't have a, we, we, is that correct?
Yeah, but that proposal.
I guess we do have a resolution here.
That's, that could, that proposal could be in the consent agenda, I don't.
Correct.
Right.
And if somebody wants to pull it, then they could.
It's self-help.
Okay.
Right. Good, thank you for your work.
And I just have one more question, like, on the list of the HR new directors, the list of important things, is this, where's this going to be?
This, this will be right here.
Is that high?
It's high.
Okay.
It's tall, it's tall.
Want to check. See how, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I mean, are y'all tired?
Yes.
Where's the, the clapping? I need to be. Okay, any other business or we do have one thing?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a resolution to read, Mayor Walker.
All right.
Be it resolved by the Charlottesville City Council that the city attorney is hereby authorized to appeal the final order or decree entered by the Charlottesville Circuit Court. In pain, ATR versus City of Charlottesville, civil case number CL-17-145.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Please vote. All right, if they're curious. Y'all tired? Okay, any, now we're, any other business? All right.
Ms. Galvin, Ebenezer Baptist, not other business?
I didn't get anything. What? Does, I don't have an announcement. You have an announcement?
The Ebenezer Baptist, the proposal?
Oh, I mean, I just, I haven't, we, it hasn't come to the fore yet. I was going to ask about it.
Okay.
But, but I wasn't going to bring it up under, under other business, but, but that was a request for scholarships from the Ebenezer Baptist Church.
They said T-Prep Workshop? And they submitted a proposal?
And that, they submitted, but I don't, I didn't, wasn't going to bring it up tonight. I was going to just ask about it.
I didn't know that if, if it had, or it could be other business.
But, Ryan Davidson was looking over at the request.
I don't have anything. Yeah, I don't have anything. Sorry.
Okay. Matters by the public, anyone would like to speak? No, closed matters of the public. Thank you.